All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City Council regular meeting from Monday, September sixteenth. There were no study session items for tonight, so I do call this meeting to order. If you're able to do so, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, City Clerk. If you could just take a roll call.
Yes, good evening. Mayor Potem Anderson.
Present.
Member Noonan Camp.
Present.
Member Prang.
Present.
Member Russell.
Present.
Member Ward.
Present.
Member Wright.
Present.
Mayor Sierra.
Present.
All seven present.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Five, minutes from the regular City Council meeting on September third. Any changes to the minutes? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the City Council meeting on September third?
I move to approve the minutes from September third.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Prang. Can we please vote?
Mayor Potem Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Prang.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to appointments, communications, proclamations of recognition. We're here to recognize our Chief of Police, Sam Watson, for his contributions to the city of Inglewood and congratulate him for his, on his retirement after thirty-six years of service. Chief Watson's retirement marks the end of its distinguished career with EPD during which he had had an enduring impact on our community and its safety. Sam has been instrumental in transforming our police department from a traditional law enforcement body into an innovative organization grounded in best practices. He has successfully implemented all thirty-four Police Reform Task Force recommendations, realigned department divisions, and introduced new processes for recruiting, testing, and background checks. Additionally, he has overseen the installation of body-worn cameras, completed the EPD records management system, secure reaccreditation, and strengthened community relations and internal programs through enhanced collaboration with Denver Fire and the Co-Responder Program. Additionally, Chief Watson has demonstrated exceptional leadership through his high-profile incidents in various critical roles, including City COVID Response Incident Commander and co-led of the, co-lead of the Police Reform Task Force. His tenure includes reformulating the nuisance abatement team, creating the department's first crime analyst position, and enhancing community-oriented policing programs. Sam consistently deflects praise, always attributing success to the dedicated efforts of frontline and supervisory staff. Of all his accomplishment, he takes most pride in his operational role, such as Patrol Officer, Range Instructor, SWAT Team Leader, and Deputy Police Chief. His leadership of the Inglewood Police Department staff in through one of the most challenging times in policing history is appreciated and will be sorely missed. Chief Watson, if you wouldn't mind, I know that there's a few words that you want to say tonight, but really appreciate your leadership over, you know, in my six years of being on City Council, but just your leadership overall here within the Inglewood Police Department for the thirty-six years. Thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I just want to take a couple minutes to offer my own things. First off, I want to thank all of council and specifically to the community for all the support for the police department over the years, to include additional staffing, the governmental bond for the new building, tax increase for a dedicated source of funding for alternate policing programs, and allow us to create programs and allocate resources in a way that provides the highest level of law enforcement services to our community. Since the early nineties, as we developed our community policing programs within the police department, the first being the Impact Team in nineteen ninety-four, all the way through the twenty-twenty's where we now have co-responders, MRU case managers, and then everything in between that time, the Inglewood Police Department has been on the cutting edge of, and the industry standard on implementing new and innovative programs. I also want to thank the city manager and the whole city manager, management team and the entire leadership of our, of the city for their support, ideas, and collaboration as all of our city departments work together to provide the highest level of services to our community. This also includes Deputy Chief Vance Fender, the Division Chiefs, and all of the Police Command Staff. Very importantly, I want to thank the fine men and women of our police department. The sworn officers and the civilian professional employees are all dedicated professionals who work very hard in dangerous and uncertain circumstances to deliver, all to deliver our highest level of quality, quality law enforcement services to our community. And as I have often said, the success of our police organization is not based on what I do, but on those who have firsthand contact in the community. We have over seventy to eighty thousand individual contacts from the police department within our community, and every one of those is meaningful. Lastly, and very importantly, I want to thank my wife, Karen, who's here, my entire family and friends for their support over the year, because law enforcement is a very difficult profession, and without their support, it would be impossible to be successful. For all the reasons I just mentioned and for many more, the Inglewood Police Department is the best department in the region, the state, and I believe nationally. I retire knowing that this department is functioning at a very high level, is in good hands, has tremendous community support, and is staffed by the finest individuals imaginable. Thank you for all the years, and I hope nothing but the best for the city and the police department. So, thank you.
Chief, not, chief, not so fast. We do want to take a picture with, with recognition, a certificate here. But chief, you did touch on one thing, the, the collaboration between City Council, the police department, city staff, but also the collaboration in partnerships with the schools, co-responder program, all the things that you mentioned, big part of it was because of you. So, really, really appreciate it. Really appreciate your service to the community, and thank you very much for your service, chief. If you got, if City Council wouldn't mind, just take a quick pic with our chief. Thank you. If you wouldn't mind, just another applause for the retirement of our Chief of Police, Sam Watson. Moving on to recognition of scheduled public comments, the deadline to sign up to speak for scheduled public comment is Wednesday by five PM prior to the meeting through the City Clerk's office. This is an opportunity for the public to address City Council. There's an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue, and please limit your presentation to three minutes. Written materials for presentation to council may be submitted to the City Clerk, and audiovisual materials must be submitted to the City Clerk by five PM on the Thursday prior to the meeting, and we do limit public comment now to ninety minutes total for the evening. Member Ward, you're going to be giving a response to public comment tonight, if I remember correctly. Up first is Jen Lambert, Inglewood resident here to address council. Good evening, Jen. If you wouldn't just state your name and your address or cross streets.
My name is Jen Lambert, and I-
Oh, actually, if you wouldn't mind hitting the light there, and then we'll start the time.
Push to talk.
There you go. There you are.
Uh, my name is Jen Lambert, and I live at thirty-eight eleven South Cherokee Street. Uh, my partner and I own our home here in Inglewood and recently decided not to move forward with building an ADU on the back of our lot. The short answer to the reason we decided not to move forward is that in order to get a building permit, we have to hire a general contractor. Hiring a general contractor adds so much to the cost that an ADU is no longer the best option for us financially. We can get a better return on different investments that take less time and effort. Hiring a general contractor is essentially hiring a middle manager. One of their main functions is to find subcontractors who oftentimes find their own contractors, and adding those layers of contractors is expensive. Chris and I are good financially. We both work decent jobs, and we have enough to pay for our shelter, food, and some fun. We also want to be able to retire and drink tea and garden, which means we have to make smart financial choices with our investments. And paying a general contractor for this project is not the smartest decision for us. You might be thinking to yourself at this point, great, that could have been an email. It could have been. However, I know that ADUs are one of the things that the city of Inglewood wants to support homeowners in building, because it is a form of housing that can increase gentle density and take some pressure off our housing market. Also know that when we start talking about housing, zoning, and density, we scrape at some very sensitive places for all residents of Inglewood. Where we sleep at night, the place we are able to feel safe to make our own and to live in is a thing that is close to all of us. I understand that as a homeowner, we have concerns over changing characteristics of neighborhoods and the value of property that I have invested heavily in. I've also rented in my life, so I understand the concerns over affordability and stability. It would have been easy to send you an email that said FYI and leave it there, but I felt it unfair to poke at sensitive subjects without doing you the courtesy of acknowledging this connection. Here's the deal. There's no magic bullet, and there's no hero that's going to swoop out of wherever to banish the darkness. ADUs are one portion of one strategy to help house all of our residents affordably. But supporting their development is an important step towards supporting our entire community in solving this puzzle we call Housing Together. I would recommend looking at the requirement of having a general contractor in order to pull a building permit for an ADU. Allow homeowners to pull their own permits. We can find skilled and appropriately licensed subcontractors by construction insurance and schedule inspections. This will not only support more homeowners in being able to afford building an ADU, but it may also pave the way for affordable, community-led housing development. There are a number of ways that this requirement can be reworked. I simply ask that you consider them. I love living in the city of Inglewood, and I want to see us continue to grow and all our residents to thrive. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Jen, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for members of council? Seeing none. Jen, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Up next is Paul Gentey, here to speak about his experience living in Inglewood. Good evening, Paul. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and your address or cross streets.
Hello, my name is Paul Gentey.
Oh, actually, light again. There we go.
Hi, my name is Paul Gentey. I'm at forty-one fifty South Cherokee Street. It's hard for me to talk about the weather in three minutes, so I'm going to try to be quick. And thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak tonight. I feel lucky to have been able to speak directly with Mayor Sierra and Mr. Anderson to detail a bit more about my experience as a resident of Inglewood since May of twenty twenty-two. I'm a Colorado native. I grew up in Denver. My parents were teachers. I put myself through college at CU Denver and Metro State. I've lived all around Denver, been a renter for a long time, and I'm a social worker, serving kids in development, developmental and behavioral health programs in the metro Denver area. My beautiful partner back there, Beth, is going to be my wife sometime soon, and we were outbid on houses in Denver by as much as a hundred thousand dollars. So, if you're from Inglewood and you have owned a house for a long time, buying a house today is really tough, and we felt extreme joy and optimism when we learned that our bid on our small house was approved. We came to Inglewood with that dream. I think, like most of you have felt, that we were going to build a life in this house. I spent so many hours painting, repairing, paying tree trimmers, mowing, watering, and caring for my house to make it as nice as I can be. I want to be a good neighbor. I believe that my partner and I are good people to have in your community. Things got weird, though. So, we live in Inglewood. First thing, I have a lot of stories, but the first thing that was kind of rough is I was on my bike, because I'm an avid cyclist, on February third, twenty twenty-three, at the intersection of Logan and Hamden Ave, and a car hit me, drove away, and I found myself on the ground with a broken femur. I had three hip surgeries. Now I have a titanium hip that didn't set off your metal detector, by the way. And it impacted my life hugely in how this, you know, community has marked me. So, next up, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, the house across the street from us, I heard sirens one afternoon and got up and looked, looked around and looked out my front window, and there are three SWAT trucks in the lawn of the, of the house across the street. Our neighborhood was evacuated except for us for some reason, and we were in our house amazed, shocked for that entire standoff leading to the death of some guy in the house across the street from us. So, that was a great welcome to Inglewood.
Mr. Gentey, sorry, your three minutes are up. Let's see if there's questions from members of council. Any questions? Go ahead, Member Wright.
Hi, thank you for being here. I'm sorry the welcome wagon wasn't that welcoming. My, my question is, you're here for a reason. Is there an ask that you're needing to ask council for something?
Uh, yes, ma'am, and thank you for that. I want to make the point that we are young residents of this community. We're invested, and we'd like to see positive changes. My neighbors and people I've met with who are longtime residents are very lucky to have been here for such a long time. I hear a lot about the good old days or how things used to be, and it makes me sad that there are no families with children on my street, none. And what reason do young people have to come to Inglewood, stay here, and build lives? I'd like to see more restaurants, more businesses that better serve younger population in our community. South of Hamden on Broadway, there's not much, fast food, vape shops, pawn shops, used car dealerships. I would really encourage the council to do anything it can to encourage businesses and infrastructure which will allow young people to come to Inglewood, make it their home, and feel enriched by this community, and have this community serve them in meaningful ways. So, that's why I'm here, is to, to let you know that I'm a young resident. I have a different experience. I vote, and I'm attentive, and I'm also invested.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you for-
Thank you.
Any further questions for members of council? Seeing none. Mr. Gentey, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Up next is Ivan Irwin, here to speak about traffic calming. Good evening, Mr. Irwin. If you, wouldn't mind stating your name and your address or cross streets?
My name is Ivan Irwin, E R W I N, forty twenty-five South Jason Street, just about due south of here. It's got a forty-foot wide, or a sixty-foot right of way. It's only forty-foot paved, thank goodness, but, okay. My wife and Kelsey Mullen, a few years back, got a lot of petitions, and they were successful. The city council at that time voted for quality of life reasons to turn down the Sports Authority project. Consequently, when they came back, they came to our house, stood on our front porch, and presented their case for the Sports Authority. And then they said, what do you want? And we said, we don't want it. But two, if you're going to do it, we want traffic calming. It was a nightmare without the, the apartments and so forth. So, at any rate, eventually, after a few months, they presented a beautiful, beautiful crosswalk right in the middle, just offset from our house in the front of the adjoining neighbor's house. And those of you who are here for that study session on Monday night, last Monday night, you got to see that beautiful, beautiful crosswalk on one of these screens. Terrific. It was the first slide that the traffic manager presented for traffic calming last Monday. There was only one slight problem. The crosswalk had already been poured in concrete and didn't look anything like that, not at all. Mr. Lewis City Manager, before it was poured and so forth, said, don't worry, they won't get their certificate of occupancy until they get it done right. So, I'm asking to make every effort, if you can have them tear it out and make it exactly like it was before for some reason or other, still make them more of a real stop. The truck drivers, they're not allowed over six thousand pounds. They come down there. If I holler at them, they give me the one finger salute. A motorcycle came around on Mansfield down Jason Street, forty miles an hour through the stop sign, goes about sixty miles down there. And I thought, boy, when that crosswalk's in there, you'll go one foot in the air for every mile per hour you're going, and when you come down, you won't like it. Being a little sarcastic. But at any rate, I, I, just like I say, the developer said maybe some more signs or something, but I think they could overlay the existing one they just built and make it a two, a four-inch raised crosswalk like they promised. So, one thing about traffic, I think traffic enforcement's getting pretty bad here. I was a sergeant in charge of the traffic accident investigating team in Germany, but ninety percent of our work was with civilians. We weren't out with tanks and trucks. Commanding General said the MPs won't enforce traffic laws on German streets. Death rate went up. He quickly rescinded that order. If you don't enforce traffic laws, people drive too darn fast. Thank you very much.
Mr. Irwin, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions?
I do.
Member Wright has one for you, Mr. Irwin. Go ahead.
Can you give me the, the exact intersection that you're talking about where there's, where they, we're putting it incorrectly that you've been talking about, so we know exactly?
Well, Jason Street's almost-
Mr. I'm sorry, Mr. Irwin, do you mind speaking into the mic? Go ahead.
Did they turn my mic? Okay. All right. It's almost due south of here. It's got a wide, but it's a traffic, this place brings traffic down that street. Okay, there's a two-block stretch where Nassau should have come in. So, stretch I'm talking about is from Mansfield to Oxford. Nassau should have come in between there. I guess the developer got his way, maybe wanted a few more houses, so there's no street at Nassau, and that's where the crosswalk is going in.
On Jason?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
It was a, the people got to that street and they said, oh my God, I knew the Bandamere Drag Strip- It was a, the people got to that street and they said, oh, my God, I knew the Bandamere Drag Strip move, but I didn't know that was here, so put the hammer down.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Irwin, thank you very much for your time tonight. Up next is Rebecca Kramer, here to speak about budget document. Good evening, Ms. Kramer. Just a quick question. Are you looking to speak for public comment tonight or part of the public hearing coming up a little later?
I was just speaking with someone about that. I can do both or either. It's just, I was going through the documents for tonight, and the numbers don't work.
If you want to make it part of the public record, it probably best to hold it until the public or until the public hearing, which is following.
And that won't be too long, so I can present it then. That's fine.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kramer.
Yeah, one comment, though, before I leave.
Well, you still have time for public comment, but do you mind just stating your name and your address or cross streets?
Yeah, my name's Rebecca Kramer. My cross streets are Lafayette and Floyd. And just in the spirit of the gentleman who just spoke on traffic calming, most of the traffic calming issues or implements, the sticks and blocks that have been put up in Inglewood, I think they're causing more traffic aggression than traffic calming. They're just, they're stacking, stacking traffic back, like I spoke to last time. They're causing problems with left-hand turns through traffic. I do have plans on going to the the public session for the Hampden, Old Hampden redesign on September twenty-fifth at Grow and Gather from five-thirty to nine-thirty. They sent out postcards. I haven't gotten one, but they have gone to my neighbor's homes. So I've already spoke with the engineer that designed that with my concerns with the medical district, eliminating the parking lanes, eliminating delivery space for the restaurants, the single-family restaurants that are along there, parking for people to go to the to the business. Paul spoke earlier about more restaurants and businesses in Inglewood, and we have great restaurants in that section of town. He and I spoke for quite a while tonight, talking about a lot of them. Undici, Bosferis, Cochino Taco, Grow and Gather. There are so many wonderful places to go to eat along Old Hampden, but with the redesign that is in place and eliminating the parking, there won't be anywhere for patrons to go to these restaurants. So anyway, I just thought I'd throw that in there. I'll see you back at the hearing statement. But the traffic calming is really just pissing people off, and I think it's making them more aggressive as they pull away from from those sticks and blocks and and other devices.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. We actually have one question for Member Wright. Go ahead.
Thank you. The twenty-fifth at Grow and Gather, it's the first time hearing from it, and many here may just be hearing. Do you know what time that's at, so those that might be interested?
Yeah, that's why I thought I'd say it during public comment, because it's from five-thirty to seven-thirty, and Grow and Gather is just east of Clarkson on Old Hampden. Really nice restaurant, but as I said, I don't know where they're going to get their deliveries or how their patrons are going to park to be able to to go to the restaurant. But it is five-thirty to seven-thirty on September twenty-fifth.
Perfect.
And the local neighborhood, some people have gotten postcards on it. I had to call Public Works, and they had the engineer that did the design. She called me back fairly quickly after I left the message to Rachel, so it's very nice. We spoke for about a half an hour, discussed my concerns. She was fantastic to speak, and I'm looking forward to meeting.
I think that would be something nice to attend, so that's great information.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
With no further questions, Ms. Kramer, thanks for your time tonight. We'll see you a little later. Up next is Peter Eckel, here to speak about Home Rule Authority. Good evening, Mr. Eckel. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets?
Yes, Peter Eckel, Logan and Radcliffe. I just wanted to make some public comment on real high-level Home Rule Authority, just for the public. Inglewood's Home Rule was adopted in the city charter in nineteen fifty-eight, and Home Rule Authority empowers local governments to make decisions that are tailored to their specific needs. This promotes self-governance, responsiveness to local issues, community involvement, and public safety. Home Rule Authority provides Inglewood with some measure of freedom from state control, and we are fortunate enough to have this freedom in Colorado. Not all states have that option. Home Rule contributes to the distribution of power among different levels of government, preventing the state of Colorado, in this case, from becoming too powerful and perhaps unnecessarily requiring Inglewood to meet a different standard, which could impact our public safety, our courts, and ultimately the people's will. Most Colorado residents benefit from Home Rule, and over the past eighty years, here was sort of the progression of that. In nineteen forty, there were ten municipalities. Sixty, there, nineteen sixty, there were twenty-two. Inglewood was one of them. Nineteen eighty, fifty-six, two thousand eighty, and in twenty eighteen, over a hundred. Ninety-three percent of municipal residents in Colorado benefit from Home Rule in their cities or towns. Sixty-nine percent of Colorado residents, which would be the total population, live in a Home Rule city or town. Public safety. Home Rule Authority can be positive for public safety enforcement by local municipalities, allowing local governments to develop specific solutions, involve the community, and experiment with adaptive approaches. Local governments can implement strategies to address local crime, patterns, emergency preparation, and community policing and related initiatives. However, it's important to address potential challenges, such as resource constraints and political interference, to ensure that Home Rule is used effectively to promote public safety. Local court, Home Rule Authority grants local governments the power to self-govern within certain parameters established by the state. This includes the authority to establish local courts and set fines for violations of local ordinances. Some advantages can be tailored justice, efficiency, and community involvement, while potential challenges can include inconsistent standards, potential for abuse of power, and resource constraints. The revenue from the court funds may be allocated to various departments or services based on local budget, including public safety, infrastructure, education, or other services. Home Rule matters if you want any kind of local control. Arguably, the Home Rule process is one of the most accessible opportunities to participate directly in democracy for constituents and ultimately should be a decision of the voters. The principle.
Mr. Eckel, your three minutes are up. Thank you very much for coming and speaking tonight. Any questions for Mr. Eckel? See, Member Russell, go ahead.
So do you have a bottom-line point at the end of your?
Yes. The principle of Home Rule Authority supports that the best government is the one that is closest to the people.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
With no further questions, Mr. Eckel, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Up next is Amy Beck, here to speak about the camping ban. Sorry, here to speak about camping ban. Shouldn't have phrased it that way. Ms. Beck, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and your address or cross streets?
Sure, my name is Amy Beck, and I live near Iliff and Emerson, just on the other side of the city line. And I am a homeless advocate in Denver. I do direct street outreach to the unhoused encampments in Denver, and I heard that you might be considering a camping ban here in Inglewood, so I wanted to find out if that is true and and maybe have an opportunity to talk with a few of you to understand what it is that you think might be accomplished with a camping ban, with criminalizing homelessness rather than helping folks that are living unhoused. You know, Denver put their camping ban into effect in two thousand twelve, and it's a failure. Aurora put their camping ban in place in twenty twenty-two, also a failure. It's not solving homelessness. So I'm wondering what you think you might accomplish by putting a camping ban in place, because camping bans do not solve homelessness. As a matter of fact, camping bans perpetuate homelessness. And in my personal experience in doing direct street outreach, what solves homelessness is housing. So I would like to hear from you, maybe after this session, to try and understand what you are trying to accomplish. I think that what I've seen happen in Denver is that Denver is pouring an immense amount of money into trying to solve homelessness, and if any of you are watching the numbers, homelessness increased by ten percent last year. So I would ask that you consider leading in a way that provides more services to your people, successful services, that actually help them to get off of the street and get engaged with community again, rather than trying to criminalize them, which is really something you're already doing. That's what the police department does, is criminalize them now. The camping ban would just give them another citation that they can issue.
Anything else, Amy?
That's it.
Amy, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for Amy Beck? Seeing none. Amy, thank you very much for your time tonight. Oh, sorry, sorry, there, actually, there's one question.
I do.
Go ahead, Member Wright.
What organization do you work with?
So my organization is Together Denver.
Okay.
And we focus on community building, prevention, and direct street outreach.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time. Up next is Jan Whitebird, here to speak. Sorry, I don't see the topic. Good evening, Jan. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and your address or cross streets?
Jan Whitebird, Federal in Bellevue. So last night at three in the morning, I sleep with my window open, and I hear three gunshots, boom, boom, boom! Boom, boom, boom! So I called the police, because it was close, and they said, could you hear anybody screaming? No, didn't hear anybody screaming, and I said I didn't hear any cars, because last time when the young man was set on fire in the bowling alley about a month ago, I heard cars and sirens. This, this time, just the shots. They said, we have an officer on the way. And I was relieved. I didn't see a car for several minutes go down the street, but I also didn't know what they would look for. So I called the police department this morning, or this afternoon, and I said, can you tell me what happened with my call? I wanted to make sure it was gunshots, because I wasn't absolutely positive, but I was pretty sure. And they said, yeah, two men were, or they didn't say men, two people were arrested. So I was so thrilled with our police department that they they found out who this was, they got him, and they arrested him, and I wanted to say kudos, because whatever it was they were doing worked. But I wanted to say thank you for that. I'm very concerned, like Peter Eckel, with protecting our home right authority. And I think on item eleven tonight, you're looking at the amendment to the municipal code regarding maximum penalties to align with state law. We don't have to align with state law. We need to be very careful before we give away Home Rule Authority. Please don't just go through this with first reading tonight. We don't need to do it first reading tonight. Have a study session. If you've had one, have another one. Look at this stuff carefully, because every time we give something away, it's so much harder to get it back. Our safety is critical. If if the state is not going to protect us, we need to know where our city officials are and that they're behind us, and there are communities right now across the country that are struggling a lot. And we need to know that you care about safety. So somebody was talking about, do people drive safely? You know, if we control our traffic, that controls part of the problem, because people that want to race down the streets won't come through Inglewood. They'll go somewhere else where they don't get stopped. So, you know, think about this. Please don't put that through on first reading tonight. The other, I would rather not see a hookah business, but that's another night. Thank you.
Ms. Whitebird, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for Ms. Whitebird? Seeing none. Thank you for your time. And last on the list is Mr. Cordova, with no topic given.
Good morning, Chris, or good morning.
Good evening, Chris. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and your address or cross streets?
Yeah, my name's Christopher Cordova. I live in Denver. And I would like to start with thanking Sean Lewis, Tim Dodd, and Tina Prang for checking on me last time. I was struggling up here, and I was going through some stuff, but I'm better now, so thank you. Steve Ward wrote in his article, "Recently, our city council meetings have seen disruptive public comments from an out-of-town First Amendment auditor, including contentious statements indicative of personal beliefs." Now, we're going to get into whether it's a personal belief or a fact momentarily, but, Mr. Ward, when you refer to me to someone that is from out of town, you're manipulating the city, because it doesn't matter if I live across the country, but I literally live across the street. And I'm going to tell all of you, just as I told Joe Anderson shortly after he flicked a French fry into my chest, that I spent about ten thousand dollars a year for the last decade in the city of Inglewood. He goes on to write, "The individual claimed that our policy prohibiting the public viewing of sexually explicit materials in our library violates the First Amendment." That's not my personal belief. That's a fact. You forgot to put Reno versus ACLU in there, where the American Library Association was a plaintiff. And I was done talking about the porn stuff, but, I mean, you're bringing it up, but, hey, you know what? My statements are contentious. He goes on to say, "I am left thinking about how free speech affects others and how having the right to do something doesn't necessarily make it right, and I agree." And have any of you heard of me watching porn in the library? I have, however, said that the benefit of banning it doesn't outweigh the risk, and according to Justice John Paul Stevens, he agrees with me. And he said, "The interest in encouraging freedom of expression in a democratic society outweighs any theoretical but unproven benefit of censorship." So, Mr. Ward, I don't think you're non-rational. I think you're stubborn, and your pride and ego's in the way, and you can't admit that you're wrong about that, so now you're trying to gaslight the city. Speaking of this clapping policy here, Mr. Mayor, the five seconds that we spend clapping after someone's public comment is not disrupting the meeting. You are actually disrupting the meeting by stopping the meeting every single time someone claps. And how many minutes did you guys spend discussing your policy about it, twenty to thirty minutes? It's a narcissistic trait for you to consistently disrupt the meeting and then blame us for disrupting the meeting. And the meeting, the policy has to be viewpoint-neutral, yet I've seen countless times people come up here and shower you guys with adulation. And when people clap after that, the mayor rarely has anything to say about it. In fact, he only really has a lot to say about it when Regan Benson does it specifically. And on your policy over there, it's vague. It just says, no clapping. It doesn't say, no clapping at public comment. It doesn't say, no clapping unless it's for the chief of police. Mr. Mayor, your obsession with restricting free speech in the form of a no-clapping policy stems from either incompetence, ignorance, or, in my opinion, retaliation against those whom you disagree with.
Mr. Cordova, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions? Ms. Whitebird, please. You know our council policy is not to allow any clapping. The reason for is that we don't want it to sway someone with a differing point of view from coming and speaking during public comments, so please just wait. Any questions for Mr. Cordova? Seeing none. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Cordova. And with that, that concludes public comments. Member Ward, when you're ready, you can give a response.
I'll try to take this as much in order as possible, but I will begin by acknowledging that Mr. Cordova is here, and that's all I have to say on that subject. Ms. Lambert, you.
Ms. Benson, please.
You, Ms. Lambert, you always provide useful, civil, polite, public comment, and I appreciate you coming in to discuss the concerns about hiring a general contractor. Many, many years ago, in a far-different life, I worked in the finance industry for an organization that managed residential construction loans, and we would frequently deal with owner builders. So I am a little perplexed by the city's policy here, and I would like to enter a council request regarding our regulations requiring a general contractor to be on projects. Specifically, what is the basis for that, that policy or regulation, when all projects are required to pass inspections anyway? So the next public commenter, Mr. Gentey. We talk a lot around town here about. We talk a lot around town here about business development. Just last month, we had the Downtown Development Authority, the DDA, in to talk about their vision for further north. The, what, 3,200 block, 3,300 block of Broadway there? And we're constantly seeking opportunity to provide for businesses in town. There are a lot of challenges, as I'm sure you're probably familiar with quite a few of them. The existing businesses are only in operation because they're profitable. So, you know, if it's profitable to run a car dealership and it's legal to run a car dealership, I'm of the opinion that the city doesn't have any business telling the car dealership that it needs to move out and make room for a restaurant. That said, we have successfully encouraged quite a bit of development along the South Broadway area. We have a city employee here whose entire job revolves around business development. And if you have any suggestions for how we can improve that business development in that area, I would be very interested in hearing about it. And we would like to hear more from you because I don't know what more we could be doing at this point. Mr. Erwin, I thought that there was a council request regarding the traffic calming in that area after you came to council last week and talked to people. I did not see it on the log of council requests, so I will enter a council request now regarding the difference between, if there is a difference, between what the developer promised and what was actually built there. That is very concerning to me. And I would like to know why that occurred. So those often take a couple of weeks, so we'll try to update you when that does come in. And traffic calming, as everybody talked about tonight, is a big discussion around our city right now. I'm looking forward to some traffic calming improvements in my neighborhood. I live across the street from the elementary school. And I have seen the police out there in the mornings recently, which is very reassuring. But there are some more passive solutions in the way of traffic calming and I'm hopeful for a future where we can start to develop some of those. Ms. Kramer, same comments on traffic calming. Thank you for reminding everybody about the Hampden Complete Streets project. That'll be an interesting public meeting and I'm looking forward to seeing that project develop. Mr. Ekho, regarding home rule. You have chosen a gigantic apple to take a bite out of. Home rule is a very messy, complicated legal topic. And our city attorney guides us as best she can guide seven laypeople who aren't saturated in the law on a daily basis on home rule. There are stacks and stacks of case law related to home rule. And I am interested in protecting home rule as much as the next guy, I think. There are places where the state has declared matters to be of statewide concern and we are required to follow. I think you'll hear some discussion tonight on the nexus of home rule and what we are looking at doing relative to court penalties and costs. Ms. Beck, thank you for coming tonight. I'm always interested in hearing from homeless advocates. It's an inexorable situation, I think, as you can see by the fact that the amount of money that Denver has poured into it has actually, seemingly, if I'm to take your statistics as true, increased the problem. I don't know what elegant solution we have, like many of the problems we have around the city, that we can apply to fix that issue. We're doing the best we can with our small $75 million a year general fund to work with organizations that are involved with homeless people around our town and leverage resources and gather groups together and work throughout the region. The Tri-Cities homelessness program is shared in Littleton and Inglewood and is in its infancy. But we're trying to work through these things and find elegant solutions. Regarding a camping ban, I think my words during the study session best describe my opinion on the matter. I don't know. I just don't know. I hear, as an elected official on a daily basis from constituents, the most common concern that I hear is related to homelessness. Why is this homeless person camping on this porch? Or why did I see that guy peeing on the sidewalk today? These types of small law and order crimes are of concern. And one of the ways that municipalities have tried to address those is through camping bans. I do know that much. I don't know that they actually solved the problem. And again, if your statistics aren't to believe that's true, they're not. But I'm all about putting tools in the toolbox. So if I do eventually sign on a camping ban, it will be because it adds a tool to the toolbox to deal with people who don't want to get plugged into the system and don't want help and want to pee on the sidewalk and want to steal and shoplift and want to live a life outside of the bounds of society. And I just don't, I don't know what the solution is to that. But I need to ensure that the people who are tasked with dealing with those problems have appropriate tools that they can apply at each stage. Ms. Whitebird, thanks so much for coming in tonight and reporting a positive experience with the police department. You're not the first resident I've heard that has reported something similar that's happened. I've had encounters with the police in their official capacity at my own home previously and I've always been happy with the outcome. I did find it interesting that you called this morning and you were actually informed of what occurred. That's a new development and I think a positive development, so I was glad to hear about that. I already spoke a little bit about home rule. I think you and I have a somewhat different opinion on home rule in general, but again, there's a lot of legal nuance there. And I do believe, generally speaking, in protecting home rule, particularly when it comes to land use, which was a topic that came up earlier this year and also last year. And that is all of the feedback I have. Thank you.
Member Ward, thank you very much. Real quick, Ms. Beck, since you offered, if you wouldn't mind leaving your contact information with the city clerk, I would like to speak to you and just pick your brain about the subject, so. Anyone else for a public comment or response? Seeing none. Everyone, are we good to move on to the next agenda item? So we're moving on to consent agenda items. I only saw one item pulled tonight. It was 9C2, I believe. Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Any others? If not, can I get a motion to approve 9A1, 9B1 through 4, and 9C1 and 3?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Member Noonencamp, can we please vote?
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonencamp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you so much. 9C2, we have Director of Utilities and South Platt Renew, Peter Van Rye. Member Russell, you had a question regarding the on-call contract.
Yes, thank you. And I just want to say, I made an amendment in the Water and Sewer Board to have one of the amendments changed. And I appreciate that it was changed for this evening. And it had to do with illegal aliens being changed to worker without authorization. But there was also some comment at the end that made me think they weren't enforcing it. But in reading the other things, I do think that's been addressed. My questions are, how do we verify that a company is in compliance with Section 31 of the contract?
I'm happy to take that one.
Okay, thank you.
So the contract requires in compliance with federal law that all contractors, all city contractors, use labor that is legal to work within the United States. And it's a little bit tricky for us to enforce that provision because we don't have access to any of an independent contractor's employment records. So they have an obligation under federal law, as referenced in the contract, to file what's called I-9 forms that verifies everyone that you pay is working legally. As a contractor or in a contractual relationship with them, we don't have access to that employment record. So if we suspect that a contractor is in violation of that requirement and doesn't have a valid I-9 on file for all of their employees, we can report that to one of various agencies that can access the I-9 and independently verify that their employees are legally compliant. We also could certainly raise the issue with the contractor that we believe that they may not be in compliance with this provision. We can start a breach of contract proceeding, demand that they immediately bring themselves in compliance. But because we don't have a contractual relationship with their employees, though, we could never have access to that employment file. We could not see their I-9s because they're confidential.
So is I-9 the same thing as E-Verify when it says in a contract that the contractor needs to register with E-Verify?
That I'm not sure. Let me Google E-Verify really quick. I-9 is the number of the form, the federal form that you have to file. I'm assuming that E-Verify is the service for filing that, but let me check. I'm a city employee and our HR does it all for the city. Yes, it does appear that E-Verify is the way to submit those I-9 forms to verify that employees are eligible to lawfully work within the United States.
Okay, so I guess my question then is, if somebody reports that they suspect a person working in their home is not, does not have the paperwork to work legally in the United States and they report that to city staff, what do we do with that?
Well, first, in a little bit of a wrinkle that I wasn't going to go into, if we knowingly contract with a contractor that we know is using a labor force that's not legal, legally compliant, we could have some potential liability there, too. So if somebody reports that to the city, we would do some independent investigation. Why do you think that? What basis would lead you to believe that they aren't legally compliant, that they're not legal to work here? If they do bring us some information, perhaps the employee told them they weren't, then I think we would have to report it to an outside agency to investigate. But first, I would want to do that independent investigation to make sure it's not not an improper reason. They're just reporting based on somebody's national heritage or something like that.
Right. And I appreciate all of that. I mean, a couple of my questions were just the same thing in a different way, but that was my last question in a different way. I guess part of what my concern is there, the burden of proof is on the person that makes the claim. And so, I mean, aren't there things that we could do? If contractor had been found noncompliant with that rule, could we develop a policy that says we will not use that contractor anymore?
We certainly could. And when we do a bid process, for example, if somebody has breached a contract with the city in the past, that can be used as one of the factors in grading the bid. But if their bid is maybe millions of dollars less, maybe that would be one factor. But I don't think it would be completely determinative. It doesn't mean we would never use them again if they can assure us that it won't happen again.
Okay, I appreciate that information, but we're still kind of on the honor system, I guess. Thank you.
Any further questions for Director Van Rye? Seeing none. Can I get a motion to approve 9C2?
Move to approve 9C2.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem, could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Prang. Any further comments? Go ahead, Member Russell.
I have some real concerns with this contract. And so I'm going to be voting no. I mean, I don't have any proof, but I didn't get full assurance that we really could do anything, so I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Anyone else? Seeing none. Can we please vote?
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonencamp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes and one nay.
Thank you so much. Moving on to Agenda Item 10. This is public hearing items for the public hearing on the 2025 budget. I'm going to ask for a motion to open the public hearing on the 2025 budget.
So moved.
Thank you, Member Ward. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Wright. Can we please vote?
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonencamp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
All right, I know we're going to have members of staff give an overview of the public hearing, but if there's anyone else that's going to be speaking in favor or against the budget tonight, if you wouldn't mind just standing up, we want to swear everyone in for the public hearing.
Can we also have people online that may need to?
Do we have people online as well?
We have staff.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Anybody that may need to.
So anyone that may potentially speak as part of this public hearing, if you wouldn't mind just, city clerk, if you wouldn't mind swearing them in, including those online, so.
Okay, if you could all please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter now being heard by the city council? Great. When you do come up, please just state your name and position with or address if you're a resident.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And I will turn it over to Director of Finance Kevin Ingles and Budget Manager Jennifer Nolan here to speak about the 2025 budget. Good evening, Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We do have a very brief presentation and then we'll open it up for questions. We're going to cover the budget calendar and then we'll talk about budget philosophy, guiding principles, and efficiencies achieved. The remaining bullets, we've provided information, but those will just be reference for questions. So here is the calendar. We are in the third quarter. We finished the September 3 posting of the budget. That was posted on the website and hard copies were available for citizens to review. And tonight, we're having the public hearing. So the budget philosophy created by the city's leadership team to inform budget proposals that are presented by staff to council, that is to provide core services and meet strategic plan goals through the retention and recruitment of qualified and dedicated employees while supporting new programs that meet strategic goal, plan goals in a cost-effective manner while prioritizing piloting new initiatives to determine their viability. Some guiding principles that were used for creating the 2025 budget proposal. One-time investments focused on prioritizing health, safety, and strategic plan projects and initiatives. Utilizing other funding sources when available, such as the donors' fund instead of the general fund. Investing in current staff resources. And ensuring that enterprise funds pay appropriately based on the administrative fee that was delivered to council last year and implemented in 2024. Those are fees for services provided to the enterprise funds by general fund staff. A few efficiencies that were achieved. We were able to eliminate operating budget requests from different departments. And these are for facility enhancements. We were able to combine those into a single citywide process called the Tenant Improvement Process. We've had the ability to move forward with long-range projects requested or considered by council, such as the analysis of food truck licenses, special event permits, youth engagement, community engagement, and homeless and sustainability initiatives. We've added a crisis intervention team case manager. This has created better synergy between the police and consultants that are addressing homelessness, addiction, mental health, needs, and of the community. We've also been able to convert a contractual services agreement into a full-time parks technician position to provide better service delivery for the upkeep of medians and some additional park maintenance support. The remainder of the slides are for reference in case for questions, so that's our presentation for this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ingles. Any questions from members of council regarding the 2025 budget? No, don't see any questions. Are we good to move to the public and get their... And, all right, so we'll move on to the public and those speaking in favor or against the 2025 budget. I was going to say, am I the one reading these off or?
There's just one in there.
Okay. Is there anyone online, city clerk? From the public? Okay. All right, well, the first member of the public to speak on the subject is Rebecca Kramer. And providing a neutral stance on the budget. Good evening. And providing a neutral stance on the on the budget. Good evening, uh Ms. Kramer, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address or cross streets.
My name is Rebecca Kramer. I live at Lafayette and Floyd. And I I was reviewing the materials for the meeting tonight. Generally go in and click on all the links and read through. And when I was re reviewing the materials provided for the 2025 budget, on page two, um as I was looking through it, the numbers don't work. Um under the capital project funds, it has an estimated beginning balance of three hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred and nine dollars, fund sourcing of ten million three hundred and sixty thousand, fund uses of fifteen million five hundred and ninety-eight thousand two or two hundred and eighteen dollars, um which shows an estimated ending balance of four million one hundred and three thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars. If you actually add them up, the three forty-one plus ten minus fifteen million, you end up with a negative four million eight hundred and ninety-six thousand uh three hundred and nine dollars. So the the math doesn't work. So I just wanted to bring that to attention. And then um as we go down, like on the general fund, there's some rounding issues between the analysis section and and the summary table on page two. Um generally, you round up, not down. And then, as I was reading through page six on the capital projects funds, um the capital projects funds that are listed come up to a total of eleven million seven hundred and fifty thousand and eighty dollars. And on page two, the fund uses for capital projects funds are displayed as fifteen million five hundred and ninety-eight thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars, a difference of four million dollars. Maybe maybe that's where we came up with a surplus of four million dollars versus a a naked number of four million eight hundred and ninety-six thousand three hundred and nine dollars after spending fifteen million when we only taken ten. So that was really my concern tonight is that the materials, there are inaccuracies in the the dollar amounts that are in the supporting documents. So I thought council should be aware of that and that we might wanna get true and factual numbers. I have a degree in accounting. I still use a calculator.
There you go.
I I would make one other comment, though. I have been watching all the study sessions. And when it comes to the different avenues that the the city and council can vote on as far as the maintenance of the building and the envelopes, I am, I don't recall whether it's uh version one or version two, but I am in definite support of the solar panels at both the rec center and Broken T. I put solar panels on my house two years ago. My Excel bill last month was twenty-eight dollars, and that's rounding up. Um and I have a a bank of money um sitting at Excel right now near seven hundred dollars in electrical credits. So the last time we had a storm and the power went out at my neighbor's house because their the neighbor on the other side, their tree fell into their house, they were out of power for three days. So I ran electrical cord over and told them, use what you want. I got seven hundred bucks to go crazy. But I just, the the they said the return is three dollars for every dollar we expend on those solar panels. Not only would it be a great investment for the city, but it would provide shade shade shaded parking down at Broken T and at um Inglewood Rec Center too. So I think that people that use those spaces would appreciate it. It is, it's one of the best investments I've I've seen proposed in the city in a long time. We need to fix that. The roof is leaking. And when the roof is leaking, you fix the roof, you don't buy a hot tub. So I I'm no on the geo bond, but I am so pro on giving you my tax money to fix the buildings and maintain the HVAC systems and and fix windows and and pay city employees responsible wages, so.
Ms. Kramer, thank you very much for your passionate plea there. Thank you very much for the uh.
Do you wanna correct as well?
Actually, I wouldn't mind. I I think on the very first one, I think we were missing the nine in the capital projects fund based on some other slides. Yeah, to the City Clerk. Uh but no, it does sound like there's some typos that we do need to correct, so. But Ms. Kramer, thank you very much for speaking tonight. Anyone else from the public wanting to speak on the budget? And city staff, is there any comments you wanna add on that? It sounds like at least one typo from the one that I was able to catch at the very beginning, but we'll probably provide you the list of items. So we won't be voting on the budget tonight, uh but if we could get the corrections for the next one, for the actual vote on the budget, that would be appreciated. So last call for anyone from the public that wants to speak on the budget. If not, can I get a motion to close the 2025 budget discussion?
Move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Can we please vote?
Mayor Potem Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sarah?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Are we good to continue, council? Yes, all right. Moving on to 1181, this is approval of ordinance on first reading amended to the municipal code regarding maximum penalties to align with state law. We have City Attorney Tamara Niles. Good evening, attorney.
Good evening. I think I have some slides to get through here.
Oh, you went too far. Oh, is it not in here?
Uh oh.
Uh oh. There was or there was not?
Oh, well, if there's no presentation, that explains it. I have three consecutive agenda items, so uh let me just confirm really quickly.
I was gonna say, there was plenty of uh plenty of uh wording and analysis within the document, but there was no presentation. That's correct, so.
Yes, okay.
All right, sorry about that, City Attorney and City Clerk for making assertions. But go ahead, City Attorney.
Uh so this is um the third time we've council has um looked at this issue. Um two for potential actions on an ordinance, and then we had a study session on um home rule authority. And then, of course, during council member's choice last week, we also discussed this matter. And um Councilmember Russell had some additional questions that we were able to add to the agenda item um on Tuesday and and keep it on tonight's agenda. Um the proposed ordinance adds a a single line in municipal code that says um the city won't sentence anyone or impose a maximum sentence or a maximum fine, including all fines, costs, and surcharges, that somebody charged with the same offense would get in district court. And um what this does, it ensures that no matter um where our police department decides to uh arrest and file charges in which court, um people in our court will be treated uh equally as people in in any other court where they could have been charged for the same offense. So, for example, if they are um arrested for shoplifting at King Supers and um the police department files the citation in municipal court, they would receive the same um penalty, the same fines as they would had our police department decided to take them all the way to Arapahoe County Court and have them prosecuted in that court. Uh our officers have a lot of discretion to determine where to file cases. Um we have quite a few uh offenses where we have concurrent jurisdiction, which means it's completely up to the officer to decide, am I going to send this to an Arapahoe County Court Judge? Or am I going to send this to our municipal court judge? So this ensures that no matter uh how our officers decide to exercise that discretion, the defendant will be treated the same. Well, at least the maximum will be the same.
Right. Thank you very much, City Attorney Niles. Any questions? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Um yes, as there's a couple of things I would like to do. I I actually have an article here from CML about legal challenges to municipal penalties. It's from February 9th, 2024, and I would like to distribute it to council because I think this would be a great reference for our discussion tonight. And and I absolutely agree with the city council. This is the third meeting that um we are having on this topic, and I I just, I have some concerns. What I would like to do, first of all, is to discuss the questions a as a council that um I asked the the city attorney um to um answer last Monday. Um because I do think there's some things in there that we ought to discuss. Um I the the one thing that that I see, even though we've had three meetings, two previous and one this evening, there has been no significant discussion between city council members about how the removal of the general penalty clause will impact our citizens and the safety of our city. Decisions are not made in a vacuum. This decision will impact citizens and the crime we experience in the city. Will it deter crime in Inglewood, or will it um increase crime in Inglewood? And um so I would like to suggest that we discuss the questions.
Thank you, Member Russell. Mayor Potem?
My question for uh City Attorney is, what what do you see the effect of this being? Is this going to um l lower the penalties that we're likely to go for in prosecution when we're in in municipal court with with a case that could have been concurrently um taken to district court?
Oh, I don't anticipate there's gonna be a significant change. Um the our, we do have a general penalty provision, and that will still apply uh to cases that does not have a an equivalent state component. So, for example, um our nuisance code, our our jog-at-large code, um that would still be filed within municipal court, and the municipal judge could still um sentence up to our our maximum that's in code. That's that's not going to be changed. So this would only apply to those cases where there are concurrent jurisdiction. I've already um advised the municipal court prosecutor not to request a sentence on any case that exceeds that of of district court. So so whether we um adopt this or not, my office won't request a penalty that exceeds that. And and generally, the court accepts um the prosecution recommendation. So so we won't have um lost revenue or um crime in the city. I don't anticipate will be changed. I have already uh requested that the judge also not sentence anyone um to any any sentence or fine that exceeds that in state court. Um but it is within the judge's prosecution or prosecution discretion, whether to accept the prosecution's recommendation and whether to accept my recommendation as well. So this um this would make it a law that 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 will happen, that that we won't exceed that in state court, that we will provide the same penalties.
And how how long have you already kind of been following this process of ensuring that we're not prosecuting at that higher level than the district court?
Uh we first raised this issue um with the court on January 9th.
Okay.
And so that's been our um policy since January 9th.
Do you have a gauge of how, like, since you've started doing that, are you are you requesting lower level of penalties than you would have before this was kind of brought to your attention?
Uh when I first um requested that of the city prosecutor, um he said, I already do that.
Oh, okay. So it's been going on for some time.
Yes.
So we don't really like, I'm just trying to gauge the what what the his, like, you know, to to Councilmember Russell's point, what the what the shift, what the shift is actually going to be in terms of the implementation of the policy.
Any further questions? Go ahead, Member Russell.
So um if there is no shift, I mean, if this is what's already been happening, why would we need to even pass this law?
Um I I recommended it because it mirrors municipal code change made by the city of rifle after they were faced with litigation. Uh and then it was at the Supreme Court, and it was their negotiation that they would insert the same provision in their municipal quo, I'm sorry, their municipal code. And that's when I first um brought it up, that perhaps we should also consider putting this in our municipal code because it would ensure that we the don't then face the same challenges that other cities have faced, um possibly having one of our cases go all the way to the Supreme Court, or defendants filing motions to dismiss our cases because we're seeking penalties in excess of of those in state court.
Any further questions, Member Russell? Your your light's still on, so. Uh, Member Wright?
Thank you. Um with with rifle, my concern with rifle, and I looked at Colorado politics because that's what I have access to. I don't have, I can't deeper dive. I guess I could, but I don't have time for that all the time. I did print um what I could, and I do have it for council. It's a town of 10,000 people, and the article said they did not have the funds to fight this. And council was not happy to step down fighting the ACLU. Um there's even a quote in here where they said, um, "We want to kowtow to the Supreme Court of," I'm sorry, um, "we want to kowtow to the Supreme Court of the state of Colorado and give our right to protect our citizens." Um this is a path to a very bad policy that will bring harm to our community within five years. And that's what the council members said. I think that statement alone brings um pause for me. One of my questions is, has the city attorney's office contacted CML and um asked what their opinion is based on even the article that they wrote? Because they said, you know, if you're questioning on doing this, contact us.
Uh we actually just had a call, um city attorneys uh through CML on Thursday, and uh people discussed, what what are you doing? Who's fighting this? Who's uh, there wasn't a lot of comment. Um we we know at least one city has indicated that um they will fight us, or fight us. They will um fight this issue. Um they've got really big pockets and they're they're um have a lot of litigation on issues like this. Um there's other cities like ours that are saying, we just won't, we won't sentence to that, so that we won't spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayer money for our deductible to fight a lawsuit if we get sued.
Okay, so that brings me to a question. If we have a city that is willing to fight this, why would we not continue doing what we're doing until there is an answer from the Supreme Court that says, yes, you must make changes? Or no, you know what? Home rule keeps their authority, and they do not have to make any changes.
I think that's within your discretion. Uh I see my role as advising city council on things that I think would pose a liability. Um our legal analysis uh indicates that those lawsuits are likely to be unsuccessful. Um but city attorneys disagree on this. Um but even if that's our legal opinion, if city council wants to not put this in municipal code and and take the risk that perhaps we'll get sued, we'll spend a lot of money, and we'll lose, that's completely within your discretion. But I feel like it's my role as the city attorney to tell you, I think this is an issue. I it could be expensive for us. We could have to dismiss some cases um that are filed in municipal court if we exceed the penalty uh under state law. And I know our police department works really hard to issue citations and thought of having one of our cases dismissed on a valid case because of a technicality. Um I think that was worth bringing to city council to say, these are issues, and we can adopt this, but we don't have to, as as you point out.
Anything else, Member Wright? Sounds good. Thank you, Member Wright. Member Prang?
Thank you. So just clarifying, we're looking at this measure tonight as a preventative measure to reduce potential liability to the city. Um and we would still maintain some level of um home rule authority in that if we have codes or fees and or associated fees and fines that are not similar to state codes, um that we can still do what we want to do, but we're just protecting ourselves from accusations of whether it's constitutional or not to charge more than what the state would charge for.
Yes, this wouldn't apply to uh any offense in municipal quo municipal court that cannot also be filed in state court, which is um most of our municipal code. I mean, we have our criminal code and our traffic code. Those generally can be filed in either court. Um but all the rest of it uh is, this wouldn't impact. So uh maybe water violations or animal violations, um the the judge would would still have unfettered discretion, uh could only sentence up to the maximum penalty that was set by city council already. So this would only apply to those where there's concurrent jurisdiction. Uh and it would also then um protect the police department of maybe some um improper policing. I mean, someone could argue, oh, you you filed this in municipal court because you don't like me personally, or you're retaliating because I exercised my First Amendment right. Um the response from police department is, it doesn't matter where we file it, we're not retaliating against you. It's going to be the same. If we could file it in district court, you'll get the same penalty in municipal court. So, yes, but it is a preventative measure, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um and then also forgive my ignorance, but we're counsel to approve this change. Our municipal court would need to then follow that rule that was just. court would need to then follow that rule that was just made, like, there wouldn't be discretion for the municipal court to have a different opinion on certain fees or fines. They would need to follow what's put in this ordinance.
Yes, they would still have discretion up to the maximum. So this ordinance sets a maximum, just like the general penalty clause, city council set a maximum there too. So the court is already working within the maximums you set. This just changes the maximum for those concurrent jurisdiction matters. So, but the court would still have discretion to sentence lower, impose a lower fine, just not higher.
Okay. And then this would also require a second reading?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Member Noonan Camp, and then Member Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation tonight. I will share that I am inclined to support this tonight, because under a system of federalism that we have in our country, this seems to be quite straightforward to me. But can you speak a little bit more to what you shared with us last week in Councilmember's choice, specifically around our liability when it comes to the equal protection clause? That if we were to be imposing fines or penalties greater than the district or the state, what constitutional, what's the word I'm looking for? I don't know, pushback we might receive?
So there's an argument that's been advanced in litigation and by the ACLU, that it would violate the Fourteenth Amendment equal protection clause. So the equal protection clause says that everyone shall receive equal protection under the laws. So the argument is that it's not equal protection when they get one treatment in, in one court and one treatment in a different court. So that, that's the constitutional argument that supports in putting such a penal, or such an ordinance change. And, I'm sorry, was there another part to your question?
Well, and just specifically, the, the liability or the litigation we expose ourselves to under a claim under the equal protection clause if we were to continue to impose fines or penalties beyond the state.
Yes, so we do have insurance coverage. Sursa provides a Rule 106 coverage, up to $10,000 for an elected official that allegedly does something improper. So that could potentially apply, for example, if the judge was personally sued for, for violating the equal protection clause, for example. Our, our policy covers up to 10,000. Our general liability policy covers up to $150,000 for defense costs and damages for any claim. But a constitutional claim could potentially also impose attorney's fees, should we not prevail, and potentially other damages as well.
That's helpful, thank you. And I have just one more question, really a little bit off of Member Pring's question about how, if we were to pass this ordinance, what the impact would be on the court. In the council communication, it says that there were concerns the ordinance would impose a substantial burden on the court, because they would have to look up the state penalties. Can you help me understand why having to know what the state penalties are is called a substantial burden?
Actually, I attached to the packet what the district court uses in sentencing and determining the, the surcharges. That is on page...
No, I see it, the table.
Yes, starting on page seven, forty-nine, is the guidance from the district court regarding fees. And so there's fees and surcharges and, and different offenses. But we had already offered to create a table of all proposed fines and fees and, for, for every offense in municipal code. And so that was something we would certainly be happy to update, so it could be a quick reference. But I do think also there are tables that district court judges use in sentencing, and I anticipate that our judge could probably use those same tables.
So just so that I'm explicit, and, and we have it on the record, the only thing that this would require the judge to do is read this table and align the sentencing, correct?
Likely yes, but this provides fees and surcharges. There's also some sentencing guidelines that provide sentence enhancement, maybe for second offenses, which, which is another table that district court judges use.
That's helpful, and certainly does not seem substantially un-estimative, thank you.
Member Ward, your light was on, go ahead.
Member Noonan Camp stole my thunder, but I, I would like to talk a little bit more about the principle of home rule, and where we have these different layers of government. So, we have the city government, which is organized as a home rule municipality, and largely governed by the city's charter. And then the next layer up, we have, you know, county government, and then above that, we have state government, and then the state constitution, and then above that, we have the US government and the US constitution. And each of these authorities becomes larger and more global as you pass up a level. So, wha, what, what I'm trying to understand is where there might be other issues related to the nexus of equal protection and home rule. Like, you could stretch potentially the equal protection analysis to say that Cherry Hills Village has very nice roads, Inglewood deserves those, why aren't we equally protected? I mean, it, it, there's a, there's gotta be a line there somewhere that, where you find the place where the top layer of government exerts its boot, and the bottom layer of government bends to its will, and the place where the bottom level, level of government, which is us, doesn't bend because we don't have to.
I think that's a really good point. I'm sure I could write a 30-page memo analyzing the Fourteenth Amendment and its application to, to city regulations. However, generally, I would say it generally applies to civil rights, criminal issues, which we're seeing here, but predominantly protected classes, your, your civil rights, everyone is entitled to, to that protection under the laws. But again, to, I would have to research it and provide a memo, but you, you make a really good point. I think people could use that argument to support a lot of different positions. For most of those positions, especially roads, something like that, I would argue the case law does not support that, and the city does not have liability for changing that. But I do think it's been used in things like school funding, for example, that, that all children deserve an equal education, and so there've been some formulas to kind of equalize the amount of funding that pupils get. So, so I think there are some, some arguments, but I, some would present a potential liability, but some, like, like roads, I, I don't think we have a potential liability there.
It was just kind of the cockamamie example that I pulled out of my hat, but, okay. That, that clarifies things a little bit. I, I do have some concern about the balance here between home rule and equal protection. I'm inclined to lean towards the equal protection argument in this case, however, because of the very thing that you've just said, which is, this is a civil rights issue. This is, this is an issue related to the fundamental rights that we all share as Americans. We've had people here earlier tonight exercising their First Amendment right. Why wouldn't they expect the same rights extended to them under the Fourteenth? So I, I'll be supportive of this change tonight, because I am compelled by the, the equal protection argument.
Member Russell, go ahead.
Thank you very much, I, I appreciate that. The one thing I think that we're all forgetting here is that no court has weighed in on this. Rifle has been threatened. Rifle has no citizens, no money. They didn't lose the case. They had to bend to what the threat was. We do not. We have already set in place issues that will protect us until another city takes this on, and, and we don't have to. However, I am wondering if we have put ourselves at risk for having these discussions in public rather than an executive session? Because now it's out there for exactly where we stand on this, and if we don't move forward this, are we putting ourselves in a liable situation? And I'm highly offended by Member Noonan Camp's going after the judge. Those questions that you asked were questions for the judge. The judge, it was in the communication that he had other questions about advisements and all kinds of things. And then if, we could have waited. I actually asked the city attorney to forward that email, because I was included on it, so that you would have all got it on Monday. And he was going to be out of town this week. I actually think, number one, I, I actually think the court understands their role much better than this council understands their role. This council's job is to create policy. The judge's job is to...
Point of order, during the question section, this is veering into discussion.
Thank you. Member Russell, is there a question coming? Because we could add that as part of the discussion point after we make a motion.
We can add that as part of the discussion point, but...
But I do get your point, yeah. So, thank you, Member Russell. Any further questions for the city attorney? See, now can I get a motion to approve 11A1?
I move to approve 11A1.
Thank you, Member Noonan, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Member Wright, was there something you wanted to add? Sorry. Go ahead.
I actually wanted to do another motion to table for when Judge Jefferson could be here and answer any questions that we may have. One of the things that it says here is that the municipal court judge is the city's criminal law expert, so maybe some of the questions that we have, he may be able to answer, and Member Russell just said he's out of town. Because I have a couple of cer, concerns. These policies were tried to be put into, and I could be wrong, but changing in 2022, from what I was reading, so it's earlier than this year. So, and I guess part of what I question is, why were policy changes towards the court trying to be implemented without the council being involved? Because it says, "While the municipal court declined to adopt a similar document." So I don't know if it was this policy, but why was this council or the previous council not involved? So there, I have a lot of questions, and I would like the judge to come when he returns, and maybe he could give some insight into this, as the judge.
Thank you, Member Wright. Real quick, city attorney, just because I'm, I'm trying to think, we're going to be voting on Bob's rules later, but if we have a motion on the table, is this a motion to amend to table? If, if Member Wright wanted to table this conversation until the judge is able to, is that a motion to amend to table, or, I'm trying to think, yeah, motion to amend to table? Or is that the proper process?
Well, again, the, the new Bob's rules say that, that you can be a little bit flexible. So I think if there's a motion to table a second, and the majority votes to table it, I'm comfortable with...
Even though there's already a current motion on the table?
Yes, if a majority supports the tabling, then we don't have to go through the withdrawal process.
Just because Member Wright did bring it up, I wanted to give that opportunity if you wanted to make a motion to amend, or motion to table, sorry.
Then I would like to put a motion to table until Judge Jefferson is here to answer questions that we have, as his official capacity.
So date on the circuit at this point?
Right. Somewhere in the email, it says he would be available, October, yeah, it says October 7th, he would be back, so.
Thought I saw that too. Okay, so, motion to table to October 7th. Could I get a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Member Russell. Any comments? Actually, I'll make a comment, oh, go ahead, Member Pring.
Yeah, I, well, I'm trying to understand and hear Member Russell and Member Wright's concerns with this. I'm actually kind of surprised that this didn't get brought forward by our municipal court, and it as something that the court is tracking and potentially wanting the city to take a look at protecting itself from. And I also agree that, you know, the issue at hand is not necessarily the expertise within our mu, municipal court, it's more about those equal protections under the US Constitution. And so for me, I don't know that I need to have a conversation with Judge Jefferson to be able to make a determination on this.
Thank you, Member Pring. Member Russell?
Thank you. I'd just like to consider, and Judge Jefferson cannot come here to advise us whether to do this or not. That's not his job. This body's job is to develop policy, his job is to enforce it. But he could come here to answer questions like Councilmember Noonan Camp just asked, "Why would it be difficult for you, or why would it take a lot to prepare?" I think that's, it was put in his email, I, I think that he should have an opportunity to answer that. I think he can answer to questions for us that, how might this impact? It's not, he, I guarantee you, he is not here to advocate for us to do this or for us not to do it. But it would be who of us to ask him questions of how it might impact the court, or how it might impact the citizens, to get a full picture of what it is. I mean, I think Judge Jefferson is the most, most ethical person. He, he judges according to the law. He, he is very balanced in his position. He is strong on, he, he is a reformed judge, he even said that in his meeting. So the things that he focuses on are restorative justice and rehabilitation. But it isn't his job, it is council's job to determine the direction, and it is city attorney's job to advise us, but it is his job to carry out judging. And I actually think it would be very wise of us to invite him here just to address some of these questions that we have. So, I guess that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. I'm just gonna go down the row, Mayor Potem, and then Member Noonan Camp.
I, I don't, I'm, I'm not supporting this, this motion to table tonight, because I, I feel like I have all the information I need to vote on, to vote on this one. And for me, it's not, it's not so much the home rule thing, I, I really don't, I mean, there's some aspects of this that I don't love, that the state could lower a bunch of penalties and then we're stuck with that, you know? I don't love that, but what I don't love even more is the thought that some citizen could come, you know, before a, you know, a police officer and really tick him off that day, and he could say, "Oh, I'm gonna take him to municipal court," really stick it to him on this one, because they have stiffer penalties, like that. The thought that that could theoretically happen, you know, whether it's, you know, legal under the Constitution or not, that bothers me. I don't like the, the, I like, I like the, the equal protection, and I think that, that one outweighs everything, everything for me on this one, and I don't feel like I, I need to hear anymore in order to know how, how I'm gonna vote on this one.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Uh, Member Noonan Camp?
Just to build off that comment, and candidly to build off Member Russell's comment, I agree with Member Russell. It is our job to set policy, it is not the judge's job to set policy, which is why I don't need him here to make this decision. I feel like I have the information, I've done the reading, we've talked about it multiple times, and there may be challenges for them to implement. I'm still not sold that they will be onerous. But at the end of the day, once we set policy, it is his job to figure out how to implement it. And I am compelled by the Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution that this is something that we should do tonight, and I'm not inclined to delay that constitutional right to our citizens for another few weeks to answer some questions. Now, if other members want to ask those questions, and we want to have that conversation when the judge is here, I'm happy to do that, and I completely understand if not everyone is ready to make up their mind tonight, but I am, and so I, I don't want to see this constitutional issue delayed for that reason. And just to put on the record, I have no personal issue with the judge, but I do have an issue with delaying what I think is the right decision for the city, based on, on claims that I don't see as being substantiated.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. I too will be voting against the tabling of this. I, I think, similar to what Mayor Potem stated and Member Pring as well, I think it was Member, uh, Member Pring, but I, I don't like the idea of making a statement when there is some type of misdemeanor charge. So for me, just making sure they're were in line with state law on these issues makes a ton of sense for me. Also, city attorney, you've been having conversations with the court about this issue since the beginning of the year. So, there's been plenty of opportunity, I've had plenty of conversations with the judge over the course of the year, there's been plenty of opportunity for him to come and voice this to this body if there was any reason for, if he felt like compelled to have that conversation. But, so at this point, I think I have the information I need, I'm ready to vote on this, and so I will be voting against the tabling tonight. Member Pring?
Just one more question for clarity. So, would we be able to invite the judge to be present and available and schedule this for a second reading when he's available to address all of the party's kind of concerns that are on the table right now?
Go ahead, city attorney, if you wanted to. Go ahead, city attorney, if you wanted to add.
Yes, if it is adopted tonight, approved by at least four council members, it would be a second reading on October 7th, when the court administrator indicated the judge could be available.
All right, sounds good. All right, with no further comments, can we vote on the motion to table to October 7th?
Mayor Protam Anderson?
Nay.
Member Nunenkamp?
Nay.
Member Prang?
Nay.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Nay.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Nay.
Let the record show two ayes and five nays.
Thank you. Any further comments from members of council? We have a current motion on the table, all right?
Oh, sorry. So is the current, is there another motion on the table still?
Yeah, the current motion is just as written.
Okay, yes, then I do have a statement.
Yes, please go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you very much. This is purely a political decision to relinquish our home rule authority to an authoritarian state legislature with no regard for the citizens of Inglewood and their safety. Basing this decision on what an incredibly small city in Colorado has done, without waiting to see where the issue will stand and who will oppose it, is an irresponsible move. Even they were not happy with their decision, but were forced into it. We should at least wait for CML to weigh in and for a legal ruling in the Longmont case. It is going to be found out, or is it going to be found out that our state has made an unconstitutional decision? And then what will we do? I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Mayor Protam?
I just wanted to say with my previous comments, I don't think, I don't think our Inglewood officers would actually do that. At least I hope they wouldn't, but, you know, to have illegal protections that we know our citizens are going to be treated the same way, regardless of what court they end up in is important.
Thank you, Mayor Protam, and Member Ward?
I'm doing this because I'm compelled by the equal protection argument and because I have respect for the Constitution and because it's what I believe the Constitution requires me to do. I voted no on the tabling because the judge can be here for a second reading. The, the issue that Member Russell brought up regarding a case being decided that changes the landscape. I think we, by doing this, we shield ourselves from having to absorb the liability that other municipalities that Member Russell mentioned are already absorbing on our behalf. And as such, I don't see the damage of adopting this policy now. I see it as protecting us or shielding us from liability, which is what we've hired the city attorney to do. So I'm glad that this came forward, and I'll be supporting it tonight.
Thank you. And with that, can we please vote?
Mayor Protam Anderson?
Aye.
Member Nunenkamp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Nay.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show five ayes and two nays.
Thank you very much. City attorney, now you're up again for 11, 11 A2. And this is the creation of a hookah business license.
Yes, this is a council requested item to consider a hookah license within the city of Inglewood. We currently don't have a specific regulatory mechanism for hookah or other tobacco products. And we received some comment from Arapahoe County and Leslie Levine, who is here, on, on the city's consideration of tobacco and hookah licensing. After we did receive public comment on consideration of expansion of the proposed hookah license to include various tobacco products as well. I didn't receive council direction to change the proposed regulation, so it's back in the original form. The proposed license would mirror the city of Denver licensing structure as follows. You have to have a business license to run a hookah business within the city of Inglewood. And there, it's my understanding there are not currently any hookah businesses. We understood that there was a license application pending, but it's my understanding that there's not currently. So, so this would not affect any current business within the city of Inglewood. But if someone comes to town to open one, then they would be required to get the license. No, it regulates the hours, no smoking between the hours of midnight and 7:00 a.m. And there's some regulatory restrictions, can't be within 1,000 feet of schools, rec centers, or our outdoor pools. And you can't smoke anything else in a hookah establishment except for hookah. It can't be in a liquor license premise, and then we provide for an application fee and then an initial license fee and an annual license fee after that. Also, a council member requested that we insert a proposal that each person is provided their own sterile mouthpiece. I don't have any personal experience with this, so I Googled it and I looked on Amazon and I found that you can buy 100 sterile mouthpieces for $10. So I had a council member ask, would this be cost prohibitive if, if they have to have their own mouthpiece? It looks like that's a thing, there, you can get them in silicone, they can be disposable. So with that, it's, it's a fairly short regulatory mechanism. The ordinance is fairly short. We tried to make it as straightforward as possible so that the city can oversee this but not provide undue regulation to prohibit business and generally to mirror what people have to do in Denver as well, so they don't have some sort of business advantage by trying to shop around to see who has the better regulation.
Thank you very much. City attorney, now is any questions for our city attorney? Go ahead, Member Wright.
Thank you. Ms. Levine and I had a nice conversation last week about this whole hookah ordinance. And what Arapahoe County Public Health says about Inglewood having a hookah bar and what the city's saying, do not agree. So their information says we do have a hookah bar on 2800 South Broadway. So, and when I Google them, they're open from 5:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. So my first question is, is if, if the county is correct and we do have a hookah bar and they're open until 2:00 a.m. in the morning. And when I Google, it appears that we have three hookah bars, probably is incorrect information. Are they grandfathered in?
No. So I got my information from our sales tax department, who should be receiving sales tax from every lawfully operated business within the city of Inglewood. There was a request to transfer a sales tax license from a hookah bar, but we understood that the bar closed and that application was withdrawn. So that's where my information came from. Now, it's certainly possible that perhaps they don't have all of the required business licenses or sales tax licenses. So it's certainly possible that there is one that the city doesn't know about. But no, they would not be grandfathered in when this, let me rephrase that. If they don't comply with our distance requirements, they wouldn't be required to close. So that they would have retroactive, they could stay where they are, that would be a due process issue. However, the requiring a license, conforming to our business hours, they would be required to comply with all of that.
Okay, so. If they're currently open until 2:00, they have their license and everything else, and their business suddenly starts suffering because they have to close two hours earlier because we put an ordinance through, couldn't they come after the city saying, okay, you're causing financial harm to us? And we're the only hookah bar in the city, you're targeting us?
Well, they potentially could make that argument that somehow we, it would be a takings argument that we took something from them without just compensation. However, that's why we wouldn't enforce the 1,000 feet restriction. If they're already an established business, we, we would still allow them to do business there because that could potentially form a valid claim. The other claims, our responses would be, we're just doing the same regulatory mechanism as Denver, and you don't have a legal right to stay open until 2:00 a.m. That we have home rule authority to establish this regulatory mechanism, and you will comply with it.
Yeah, pick and choose. Okay, so. When I spoke to Ms. Levine, Arapahoe County is asking that we just look at, and I agree, at addressing all tobacco issues. And they would like a study session to discuss the issues. And some of the statistics she was giving us, giving me was, it's pretty scary, actually. Incoming seeing elementary aged students and stuff, and I'm so thankful I don't have kids in school right now. So what I would propose, and I would, and I don't even know if I'm doing this right now, head cold, sorry. Based on, I would like to confirm that this hookah bar, first of all, is actually, you know, alive and well in Inglewood before we, because we have conflicting information. You know, Ms. Levine had asked in July for, I believe it was for it to be tabled for a study session. So I would like to make a motion that we do table this for now, and Arapahoe County come to us and do a study session and give the information to us around all tobacco information and what their wish list, I guess, is of a type of ordinance that they would like Inglewood to put through. It was good information that she gave us, and the statistics are pretty staggering on what's going on with our youth right now. So that's, that's what, I guess I put it through.
I got it. Thank you. So just a motion to table this item until a date uncertain?
Yeah, in a study session with Arapahoe County Public Health, yes.
Could I get a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Member Russell. All right, any comments to table this to date uncertain? And go ahead, Member Ward?
I don't object to tabling it, but I don't support it. So I don't, this is another one of those issues where I, I really don't think there's anything that I could hear on the subject that would compel me to vote yes. I'm a consumer of a variety of tobacco products and have been over the course of my life. I think they're overregulated. I know that's not the popular opinion, but I don't want to exercise my government authority to, to increase government regulation in this sector. So I'm not interested in this item, but if it wants to be heard at a later date, I will, I'm one of seven, so.
Thank you, Member Ward. I'll voice in. I'll also be opposed to the tabling. This was narrow in scope for a reason. I think this was really just to prevent some of the issues that other cities have had around hookah bars. This was not intended to be like a smoking or that type of ordinance. I, you know, I can't speak for all members of council, but I just don't think that's very popular with this current council. But to me, this was always just a very, the scope of this issue was just around hookah licensing and business licensing. It wasn't about the greater issue of smoking. So for me, I will be voting against the tabling of the, of this item. So, Member Nunenkamp?
I have a question for the city attorney. If the county were to do additional work, and we might find out next year that they have some recommendations for some changes that we were to make, do you see any concern with passing this tonight and then amending it next year with new information?
No, I think we could adopt this as, as potentially a first step and then continue to study and expand to additional tobacco regulation if that's what, what council would like to do. Nothing would prohibit us from doing that.
Thank you.
And I should note, too, that Denver regulatory mechanism does regulate other tobacco businesses, too, but not just hookah.
Thank you so much. All right, with no further comments, can we vote on the measure to table to date uncertain?
Mayor Protam Anderson?
Nay.
Member Nunenkamp?
Nay.
Member Prang?
Nay.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Nay.
Let the record show four ayes and three nays.
All right, thank you so much. All right, there's still no motion on the table. Any additional questions?
That was opposite. Sorry, excuse me. It was, it was, yes.
Three ayes and four nays.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I had as well. So, thank you for that. Still no motion on the table. Any additional questions regarding this? Go ahead, Member Prang.
Sure, just one additional question. So I did ask city attorney about the requirement for the mouthpieces. And I guess I still have a question on creating an ordinance and saying that it's required. How do we go about enforcing, and are we setting up ourselves for any kind of liability if we're not regularly enforcing or going in and checking that everyone's bringing in their own sterile mouthpiece?
So we, we don't have liability if we aren't able to effectively enforce it. But I would anticipate, because it's a, would become a licensed business, it would be subject to occasional inspections, especially from the fire marshal who regularly inspects businesses, possibly by our licensing officer that does some sales tax things as well. And so if we walk in and we see that not everyone has their own sterile mouthpiece, then that would be a violation that we could file in municipal court that would be subject to our general penalty provision.
City attorney, just a question. I'm not sure if we're gonna have the answer for this, but since we're not aware of this business operating, do we have any, have we had any issues with them operating within the city of Inglewood? In terms of just police presence or anything that they've been called?
I'm not, I'm not aware of any. I did, I've got internet on my computer right here. I did find that there is a website for what purports to be a hookah lounge on South Broadway. And I pulled up the email from our sales tax department that they, there was a pending application for a hookah lounge at that location, but it's being amended. The owner informed the city on August 20th that she no longer plans to open a hookah lounge, but she's planning to open a retail store that sells tobacco and vape products. And she has the required state nicotine product retailer license. So I know that was just the one website I found, but I haven't driven down South Broadway to personally look for a hookah lounge.
All right, perfect. Thank you, city attorney. Any further questions? All right, see, now can I get a motion to approve CB 23?
I move to approve CB 23.
Thank you, Member Nunenkamp. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Prang. Any further comments? Go ahead, Mayor Protam.
I'm opposed to this ordinance tonight, mostly just because I'm not a huge fan of multiplying businesses. License is a way to regulate potential nuisances, I think. Just additional, additional set of regulation mechanisms, those things tended to sort of add up and grow. So I feel similarly about the massage business license we discussed previously. I would like to see those, using our nuisance, you know, our actual nuisance law to regulate actual nuisances. So I'll be opposed to this tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Anyone else? I will be voting in favor of the creation of the hookah business license. I actually kind of thought the similar, similar thing as what city attorney just stated. They're right down the street from me. It doesn't seem like they've opened at all, but, but they do have the website and they do have a sign outside that says that they're a hookah bar, but it doesn't look like they've opened. Regardless, just the issues that we've seen just north of us on the other side of Yale within Denver was cause of concern for me. I do think that this is something that we should be instituting. So I will be in favor of this. I would be in support of this ordinance itself, so I will be voting yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, go ahead, Member Russell.
So what types of things are happening, happening on the other side of Yale?
Well, they haven't happened, at least for a year now, but there were several issues. It was actually north of Evans, but several late night parties going into very early hours, 4:00 a.m., 5:00 a.m. Where there was just, you know, just, that was the one place that you can go that were, that was available. So I think at that point is when the city of Denver put in an ordinance regarding hookah bars. But it was just on the other side, but it was right around, just probably right after COVID, 2021 or so, that they were experiencing major issues. And so that's something that I don't want to see happen within Inglewood.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Current motion on the table? All right, and with that, can we please vote?
Mayor Protam Anderson?
Nay.
Member Nunenkamp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Nay.
Member Wright?
Nay.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show four ayes and three nays.
Thanks so much, city attorney. On that item, you have one more. This is regarding amended municipal code to adopt 2023 Bob's Rules of Order.
Yes, we have met on this several times already, July 15th and August 19th. We presented on Bob's Rules of Order and discussed potential changes to municipal code as well as any amendments to the new Bob's Rules of Order. City council members did request whether Bob's Rules can be added to the collection at Inglewood Public Library. I have confirmed that it can be added. Can the city buy extra copies to sell to the public? We can, but also the public can buy it directly from the same people that we buy it from, which which is CML, the CML website, because this is a, a CML publication, which is Bob's Rules of Order for Colorado cities. So I'm just touching on the changes that we discussed at the last study session and based on council direction. So on a motion to reconsider, I removed Inglewood's nuances regarding the motion to reconsider, specifically the one that bothered me, that said a motion to reconsider can be made at any time, because we could also bring back agenda items or we can make new motions to change a prior action. So under Bob's Rules of Order, that means a motion to reconsider could be made at the meeting where it's adopted or the next meeting only. Otherwise, it would have to be a brand new motion. It also encourages the use of a, instead of a complicated motion to reconsider, it encourages then the use of a new motion. So the same motion as the original failed one, instead of a motion to reconsider that original vote, you can just make the same motion for a new vote. Recusal. I have supplemented Bob's Rules of Order with our current rule that a recusing member does not leave the room, but if a lack of, but if we lack a quorum without them voting, it will be tabled to a future meeting that has a quorum unless timely action is required. So it would say if somebody recuses, we still have to have five people that are eligible to vote on the item unless we have to vote on it right then. If there's a, a pressing reason, we can't table it. Executive session motion. This amends Bob's so that executive session motions are debatable, but I lim, I wrote that it's limited to determine whether the subject is appropriate for executive session. And this was something that we discussed, I think at length during the study session, that sometimes council may decide, no, we don't want that discussion in executive session. We want it publicly. But, but we shouldn't give away the confidentiality. It would just be what the reason is for going into executive session. And as you've seen, I personally like to use executive session as sparingly as possible. We like to leave things out in the open and then go into executive session when it's absolutely necessary. So we actually try to limit that substantially from a staff side. Rule 1.5, the council members were kind of torn on this one. This is whether a motion is required to be on the table prior to discussion. Bob's Rules of Order proposes no, the new one, that no, you can have some discussion before a motion. I think judging from the majority discussion, the majority supports requiring a motion before discussion. However, I, I propose kind of a compromise that says, okay, we're keeping the current rule. We have to have a motion before discussion, but the mayor can make an exception to expedite discussion and decision making, because sometimes there can be a need to, to discuss some things to even determine what the motion will be. And so this would give the mayor discretion to say, for example, in the point of order that we just had, that this is time for asking questions, there's no motion on the table, that response could then be, mayor, I, I think this is a discussion we need to have so we know what motion to bring to expedite that discussion. So this would, would have modified that practice that, that we just had. Discussion privilege. We propose maintaining the current rule that the moving member has the privilege of opening and closing debate on a debatable motion. So if you, I, I move to approve the council bill, you get to make the first discussion and then the mayor will give you the opportunity to close that debate as well. And that is our current rule. We also propose adding to Bob's Rules our current rule that any member or the mayor may request the clerk add an abstract of, of comment or debate to the record on the, on the item. We also propose maintaining the current point of decorum based on the discussion we had at the last study session. We provide the same format and background as the Bob's Rules for the other points, so you'll see that in the council bill. It mirrors the way Bob's is laid out and then it provides a table and it provides some background and an example motion for council to follow. But it follows the rules we currently have. It just makes the format the same as the new book. Other municipal code changes, that we remove provisions that are duplicative of Bob's Rules and we went through those in, in detail. Bob's Rules, for example, says that the, the mayor has to, or the chair has to recognize someone before they speak. So because it's in Bob's Rules, we don't need it in our municipal code. So we've tried to simplify duplication. So next steps, if that all sounds good, we do have an ordinance in front of you tonight that incorporates all of those slides. And after approval on second reading, then, assuming it's adopted, then we plan to adopt a cheat sheet that's, that's a simplified version so that citizens can follow, something we can put on our website, something council can have with them during meetings so they don't necessarily have to flip through the entire book to find exactly what rule. It will be fairly short and just cite the things that I determine are generally complicated, such as motion for reconsideration, or some, some changes, or things that we use most often. So the goal of that will be something simple and that citizens can access as well.
City Attorney, thank you very much for that. Any questions for the city attorney? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you. Will, will there be some annotations in the book about which rules we've changed?
Absolutely. We've already discussed making some stickers, like label type stickers that we can just put in to know which rules are changed or which rules are added or see a specific reference to municipal code. I know I want that for my own book so that when council requests, can you provide guidance on the motion to reconsider, then it, it's a comprehensive reference. So we would propose to do that for all the books we've already given council, which so far we've only given books to you, me, city manager, and I believe the city clerk's office has a book. So we would do that for all the books we've already distributed as well as any additional ones we keep on hand.
And, and including the ones we would put in the library? Is there a, is there a copyright issue that might prohibit that?
Copyright means we can't, we can't, we can't copy it. We can't give it for free. We can't put it on our website for people to, to access. I would want to put a note in any book in the library that says, see municipal code for revisions. I, I don't know that I would feel comfortable adding our specific additions because that, I believe, would violate the library's circulation policy or collection policy, but I would confirm with them.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Member Prang.
Thank you. I appreciate your consideration for 1.5, which I obviously was in the minority on. But I, I do believe that allowing for more discussion sometimes can benefit the, the decisions that are made in the long run, just knowing how to make a motion and perhaps even preventing us from having several rounds of emotions and amendments going on. We could gather more clarity. So I just have a question on how that would work. So if we give the mayor discretion, would we as council members just be able to raise the question in the moment to the mayor to say, could we have an exception on this issue to have discussion prior to a motion being made?
Well, I, I think what happened tonight would have been a good example of that. If somebody said point of order, there's no motion on the table and, and we're at the question and answer period, then if the mayor could then turn to the member and say, what's your response to that? The member could then say, well, pursuant to rule 1.5, I think discussion before the motion is appropriate here to expedite the discussion or to help narrow down the motion or narrow down the legislation. And then the mayor could then say, okay, I agree and so I will allow it. However, there is an additional point, somebody could say point of appeal. I, I, I don't think the, the mayor is properly exercising the discretion here, in which case then council could consider, consider it if it went that far.
Actually, I, I'll, I'll raise the question because I'm going back and forth now regarding rule 1.5, because I was one of the members that actually felt the current state made the most sense, but after tonight, but also thinking about other contentious issues or at least where there was a lot of opinion, I could see the value of this. So is that the reason why Bob's Rules has kind of changed their thinking on this? Is that it does foster better discussion?
Yes, that it can narrow down issues, it can expedite the overall discussion if it's not bifurcated, that it's, it can be in, in, at one time.
Okay. Thank you for that, City Attorney. Mayor Protem and then Member Ward.
I could speak just a little bit to the, to your question there on that, if that's, if that's okay. There's a little bit of discussion before motion, but I think that's.
I will wave.
I actually, I got, I got curious because in, in the, in the book, it says that it's common in Colorado cities to not, not utilize this rule. And so I listened to meetings from probably, that's how boring of a person I am, from like six different cities, not the whole meeting, but, but portions, portions of different meetings. And I found several cities where their typical practice is to have, have a question time and then discussion and then they make a motion and vote immediately after the most, motion. And it's, it's both, I saw, I think it was Centennial and Greeley are two, the two that I came across that did it that way. And it seems a little, I mean, it's fine, everybody does things differently, a little weird to how do you do amendments and that kind of thing under that. Maybe they make amendments before they have the main motion or something, something like that. But I think that's the reason that they put this in here is because there, I think there are a number of cities where that's the fairly common practice. And I think for, you know, I just like to continue our current practice unless there's a compelling reason, but I really like this, that I think is a good balance to give, give the mayor flexibility, because I do think there are times where it makes sense to have some discussion like now.
Thank you. Member Noonan Kemp or who was, whose light was on?
It was me. What I read when I, I looked through this 1.5 section in Bob's Rules of Order was, well, lots of cities don't do it the way that I prescribed in my first version, so I'm changing the rules to the way that these other cities do it. And I, I don't like that very much. I think the method that we have now works well. I'm okay with adding the exception. I think it, it hits a happy medium. And by and large, mayor, I trust your judgment. So I think it, it does make your, your job potentially a little more difficult because there is an opportunity for some contention there if, if we form a habit of deviating regularly from, from the prescribed rule. But I think for, from a meeting organization standpoint, the, this body has proven itself to benefit very well from a structured meeting. And I think this serves us better than the alternative would.
Thank you, Member Ward. Anyone else? Member Prang, go ahead.
Since we're having discussion prior to a motion, I'm going to join back in. I just want to clarify how I read the section in the book is that it doesn't mandate that you have to have discussion. It just allows for flexibility to not require the motion be made first. So that was why I liked it so much. And I guess to the point about mayor's discretion, you know, I, I do think that there can be a lot of pressure on the mayor as a facilitator of our meeting to allow or disallow an extended amount of time to kind of give disclaimers before questions are asked. And so for me, this change in Bob's Rules, I would like to see it outright adopted and was in support of that because it just kind of takes that out of the mix. Like, you know, why, why would one more experienced council member, you know, be able to make a lot of statements leading up to a question versus maybe someone who's not as experienced being able to kind of get to that question themselves without being that savvy? But I do like the compromise. I, I hear, you know, the, the efficiency pieces. I don't think that this would distract us from being efficient. I think in some ways it could lead us to be more efficient, but I'd be happy to support the discretion of the mayor around these matters as well.
Thank you, Member Prang. Actually, I'll, I'll just jump in here. Actually, I'm now in favor of allowing discussion before a motion. And I, I think, we'll just talk about tonight since it's fresh in our minds, but I think the, in terms of Member Russell, when she was bringing up a point regarding the, the first ordinance that we were speaking of, to me, it just made sense for you to have that discussion at that point instead of calling for a motion, or for us to jump in in terms of just our process. To me, it just made sense for us to have that point in that discussion, but the inflexibility of the current rules don't allow that. So for me, I think it does make sense. There's been other instances where I've kind of noticed it where it probably would have facilitated better decision making. Code Next is one of them. When we were having those discussions, that kind of just pops to mind in terms of just allowing that. The, at least from my point of view, since I am sitting in this chair, having, you know, I appreciate you guys giving me that, you know, the, the ability to decide yes or no on a rule. But for me, I, I do have issues with curtailing your voice when you have all been elected, just like me, we all have the same power and speaking on specific subjects. So I don't like the, the fact that I have that power to limit your voice at a specific time just to have you say it a little bit later. For me, it's, it's gonna be pretty hard, but the way that if we do move forward with the way that's currently realized, it's just gonna be just based on the flow of conversation and whether or not that that can happen, you know, after the motion's been made. So, but that's just my, my two cents on the subject. Mayor Protem and then Member Ward.
I'll just make a, a little counterpoint to that because I'm not so concerned about having discussion before a motion. What I'm more concerned about ha, is having discussion during a que, you know, during, during question time, because I think that, you know, like it's really, it's, I think it's really helpful to distinguish, and even the cities that do, that I saw that do discussion before motion, their mayors typically still say, okay, now we're moving into discussion time. They'll have a question time and then discussion time. Because even now I'm questioning, should, you know, we're having discussion, should the city attorney be standing up here? Is that ru, ru, you know, rude to the presenter to be having, have, going into discussion early or when I'm trying to restrain, restrain myself from piping in with my opinion during question time if somebody else does it? This is where I see the potential problem is me or someone's trying to restrain themselves, I'm gonna wait till discussion time, but somebody else decides, I'm gonna go ahead and, you know, put my two cents in and there's no rule preventing it. Does that, now, now, does, does, that mixes up discuss, if one person does it, then I'm gonna want to do it. I just really, I, I think that's the really important thing is separating questions from discussion ultimately.
Thank you for that clarification, Mayor Protem. Go ahead, Member Ward.
Noting that Member Prang caught me inadvertently dipping my hand into the cookie jar, I move agenda item 11A3.
Second.
Thank you so much, Member Ward and Member Noonan Kemp. All right. Any further comments? Go ahead, Member Ward.
I think one thing that we should consider is appointing a parliamentarian. It may be the city attorney who we've, who has served as our de facto parliamentarian in the past or maybe a member of this body. But the, the, the rules of order, the, the body in my opinion is best served by having an expert on the rules of order, the personality of whom may differ from the required personality for the mayor. So I, I think that is one thing that we should consider. I'll, I'll circle back to the, the previous discussion and just say I, I support the current process.
Thank you, Member Ward. Anyone else want to chime in? Go ahead, Member Prang.
Is this time to make an amendment to the motion that was made? So I move to amend the emotion to allow the inclusion of 1.5. Yeah. I think I'll just leave it at that. I'm saying that in consideration of what Member Anderson said about the clarification between question time and discussion time. I'm not adverse to that, but I would like to amend it to move to adopt the full revisions of Bob's Rules inclusive of 1.5.
So, Member Prang, just to be, before I get the second, so this would still require a motion before discussion? No?
It doesn't require.
Motion is.
It allows for discussion before a motion.
Motion is not required. Okay. Has amended to say motion to, okay, perfect. Thank you. Could I get a second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Member Russell? Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
I, I just, I, I, the one thing I did, I wanted to speak to is, I want to make I, I just, I, I, the one thing I did, I wanted to speak to is, I wanna make sure you, Mayor, know that you still have the authority and in my opinion, the duty to manage the question and discussion time. So I don't think this takes anything off, you know, off, off your plate, because I, I still hope you will say, let's hold off, you know, let's hold off on discussion until we finish the question time and our presenter sits down, whether we're gonna have the discussion before or after.
No, that's understood. Thank you for that, Mayor Protam. Anyone, Member Russell, go ahead.
Uh, I would actually just like to share, I don't think we need a parliamentarian. I think this council has worked very well together and, um, you know, we listen to each other, so, um, I, I agree with all of this. And, and Mayor, we're, we're pretty good at helping you do what you should do anyway, so.
We do work as one sometimes, so, thank you so much, Member Russell. Anyone else? All right, and with that, can I, can we vote on the motion to amend, uh, for wa- rule one point five?
Mayor Protam Anderson?
Nay.
Member Nunikamp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Nay.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sarah?
Aye.
Let the record show for, um, sorry, five ayes and two nays.
Thank you. Anything else regarding, uh, CB thirty-nine? All right, and with that, can we vote on the motion as amended?
Mayor Protam Anderson?
Aye.
Member Nunikamp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sarah?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
City Attorney Alice, thank you so much, stood up there a long time, so thank you for your time. Moving on to eleven C one. We have Director of Utilities and Cell Plant Renew, uh, Director Van Rye here to speak about, uh, utility staff is seeking city council approval to join class action statements against, uh, Tyco Fire Products and BASF. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is actually similar to one we presented just under a year ago last, I believe it was October, uh, with, uh, three M at DuPont, uh, so this is, we anticipate a series of, of ongoing class action settlements regarding PFOS or Forever Chemicals with a series of chemical companies over the next, who knows, maybe several years. Um, so these are the next two that are in a class a- class action court. And we've got some deadlines that we need to, uh, meet if, uh, depending on whether we stay in or opt out. And so just as a general overview, PFOS and P, F, PFOA and PFOS are the two that are, um, are focused on. However, you can see there are some, um, new rules. So the new rules have gone into place uh, between the last time we talked about a settlement versus now. Um, those rules are in the final MCL, which is the maximum contaminant level. We've actually done some recent sampling in July, which, um, was, uh, was actually pretty positive. Our, we've changed some ways that we're, um, treating through the treatment plant. And, um, it appears to be, um, helping to remove more, uh, PFOS and PFOA. Um, and so that's a, that's some good news, um, but we're still working, um, to, um, we still have it in our source water and we're still working to, on ways to, um, improve the removal of those chemicals. So, uh, as a reminder, PFOS is found in, um, it's ubiquitous, it's found in all kinds of different things. You can look all, circle there and see all the common household items. Uh, so there's currently two, um, uh, class actions, one against Tyco Fire Products and one with BASF Corporation, uh, there are multi-district litigations, um, and they're seeking damages. There's, um, four hundred and forty public water plaintiffs. We are estimated to be, uh, among the six to seven thousand are eligible to participate since we do have, um, contamination of our source water. For the Tyco, um, products settlement, uh, right now it's agreed, the preliminary settlement is to for them to agree to pay seven hundred and fifty million total. Um, and the key date here is we have to opt out by September twenty-third, which is next week. If we're going to opt out. Um, this is a, a quick timeline on this. Um, we found out about these in August, and so it's not like we've been sitting on this for months. We found out about it in August, brought it to Water and Sewer Board and have now brought it to council for consideration. So, um, if we, uh, um, otherwise we file a claim to stay in, we need to make that uh, decision by the twenty-third and then the final court approval is scheduled for November first. It's a little bit, um, uh, smaller and a little bit, a couple more weeks with BASF. It's three hundred and twelve million, opt out is October fifteenth and, uh, again, the court, uh, same final court approval is November first. So essentially what it means is if we, um, uh, do, or if we're similar to, uh, the approach we took last time, um, if we stay in, we believe that we're maximizing the potential of a positive uh, result in, and maximizing the potential for the amount of money that we would receive through one of these uh, class actions from these two chemical companies. Um, the concern with opting out is that typically in these types of situations, a lot of time in these types of situations, if there's a class action and it essentially, uh, bankrupts the company, by the time we're ready to, uh, take on our own suit against the, the chemical companies for damages that we don't even know what those damages are yet, um, we, uh, there could potentially be no money available. So this comes down to, um, I said this at the Water and Sewer Board, it's the simplicity of the old adage of, um, a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush. So, um, we estimate the recovered amount would be between around a hundred or a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, if we were to stay in, and that would be the similar approach that we took with the three M settlement and the, um, DuPont summona- settlement last year. This does not, however, preclude us from staying in, in the Colorado filed lawsuits, so there's a separate, um, uh, lawsuit filed by the state of Colorado, we'd still be eligible through that um, lawsuit to receive, um, funds if there's any settlement, uh, through that, uh, Colorado, um, that Colorado lawsuit that's, uh, uh, filed independently. So our recommendation, uh, to council, for council to consider is to similarly as we did last year, to stay, um, to opt in, file a claim and then, um, see what kind of results we get from filing that claim. Hopefully we get some amount of funding, but again, with any of these, um, there's no guarantee in any of it. Um, but we believe that this is the best way to receive the most maximum positive result for the city in this issue. Uh, Water and Sewer Board did recommend, uh, council approval, uh, at the September tenth meeting.
Director, thank you so much for your time. Any questions for our director on PFOS settlements? See, now can I get a motion to approve eleven C one?
Move to approve eleven C one.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Russell. Any further comments? See, now can we please vote?
Mayor Protam Anderson?
Aye.
Member Nunikamp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sarah?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Director, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Quick night for you. All right, moving on to mayor's choice. Actually, just, I believe there's only one item for me tonight and I think I'm forgetting another one, but, um, I wanted, we've done this in the past where I wanted to just gauge, uh, council sentiment, but obviously there, the GO bond is gonna be on the ballot here in November. Um, would this council be in favor of putting together a resolution in support of the GO bond? So just wanted to weigh members, um, yeah, preference on that, but go ahead, Member Russell.
I have a question for the city attorney. Um, because we are asking and we approved this on the ballot, is it interference with campaign finance laws if, if council would recommend uh, approval of the GO bond?
Uh, no, that's a good question, but the answer is no. There are two exceptions under the Fair Campaign Practices Act. Um, generally for people watching, the FCPA prohibits expenditure of any public funds um, to support or oppose any ballot question. However, one exception is that a, an elected body can adopt a resolution in support and elected officials can each spend fifty dollars of public money to support or oppose any ballot question. So the resolution is FCPA compliant.
Okay, thank you. Then, then I'll weigh in. I, I am not in favor of doing this, um, because we've already approved putting it on the ballot and letting the public decide. I personally believe that we have not vetted things enough. Um, I'm okay about improving infrastructure, um, but I still, I think very difficult times are coming and I think we should leave it up to the citizens and stay out of it. We've already put it up to them.
Thank you, Member Russell. Uh, Mayor Protam, go ahead.
I'm not supportive of doing a resolution.
Okay, anyone else?
I, I, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Talking, um, I agree with Member Russell and Mayor Protam.
Okay.
I'll let the voters decide.
All right, anyone else on council? Go ahead, Member Nunikamp.
I would support putting it on the ballot, but if we had a unanimous council, so I'm not comfortable with the, with what's been voiced already.
Okay, well, there we go.
Same sentiments, exactly.
There we are. All right, that was my item for tonight. I think I may be missing something. If I remember, then I'll come back to it, but anyone else for council members' choice? Go ahead, uh, Mayor Protam.
Um, I just thought I'd mention the, uh, the event with, uh, Senator Hickinlooper, uh, Clarkson Circle is a good, good event. We had a roundtable discussion, a lot of neighbors, uh, neigh- neighbors local there to talk about our lead service line replacement program. Um, and good to have the, the senator in, in Inglewood promoting the good work that we're doing and, um, the federal funds that have made that possible as well. Uh, though, one other thing I had is, I went back and watched the Water and Sew- or portion of the Water and Sewer Board meeting. Uh, I guess it was last, last week, um, where there was a variance, um, a variance given for these water lines. I, I would like to, um, see this, the, uh, that provision of code uh, amended so that it's legal to have water lines crossing, um, crossing other properties as long as they're in appropriate easement and everything like that, especially for these, um, these, uh, front back splits and that kind of thing, is that's gonna be requirement, but I wanted to see if there was council support for, um, moving, moving an amendment forward to our code for that. Maybe I should give a little more context for, okay, so, uh, whenever someone, our code right now requires uh, that a water service line or sewer service line not cross any other property. If you do a front back split like we allow on corner lots or a courtyard pattern potentially, your water and sewer lines will have to cross another property, the sewer line from the back and water line from the front in order to reach the back unit, front unit. Um, which makes sense to me, I think people should, I mean, uh, you know, City of Inglewood has on our own, you ta- we have, we have easements all over the place, you know, uh, other people own property, we have utilities on, we own property that we allow crossings for other utilities. So it's fairly common for governments to have u- utility easements. I think that same property freedom should be extended to the citizens of Inglewood. And if they wanna put a, a utility easement on their property, um, to allow that, um, that utility line to reach the back of the property or the front, that should be allowed by, by right and not have to go through a variance. And I think we'll be, potentially be seeing quite a few more of these variances come forward and, um, I, I think it's something we should just allow by right.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Just real quick, so if I remember correctly, it is not part of, it's not part of, uh, Title sixteen, it is part of what, Title twelve, was it? But it wasn't, but it would not have to go through planning and zoning.
No, it would not. It would just be a simple code amendment, yeah.
Thank you. Member Wright, go ahead.
It's, on something like that, isn't this more than just us? Wouldn't Excel, um, and other utilities, I, I think it's something much bigger than us. Just from experiences of people in the trades, I've heard stories. So I think it's greater than the city and we would need to talk to, I wanna say the PUC, but it's not, I'm thinking telecommunications.
The, the code only prohibits water and sewer line, doesn't prohibit electric, uh, easement, electric easements or gas easements. So it's just on the water and sewer side that it's, that our code affects this issue. So I don't think it's any broader than that. In fact, I think it's pretty common to have electric and gas easements as well.
I, I would like a broader discussion on it, please. It just, part of what I'm thinking is I've heard the horror stories where, and, and I'll use sewer then. A sewer line breaks and the line goes through a neighbor's yard because of an easement. The neighbors don't like each other, so you can't go on my property and cities have to get involved. And, um, city employees has to stand on that property while the lines are being repaired. So I, I think it has to be a bigger discussion than, than what we're discussing now. I, I think there's much more to it.
Thank, yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Member Wright. So, yeah, so I think regarding a study session, I would be in favor of that as well. I think that there's just a, there was what, five properties during, during the Water and Sewer Board, so, um, do wanna get to the bottom. So there's at least three now that are in favor of it. Member Nunikamp, yes, five, okay. So, yeah, we can get a study session on the topic. All right. Um, anything else regarding, nothing else, uh, Mayor Protam? All right, ma- uh, go ahead, Member Ward.
Just wanted to give a brief update. I attended the CML District Three meeting thir- last Thursday night in Cherry Hills Village. It was a dinner meeting. Uh, I'd really like to see Inglewood become more involved in CML functions, specifically the council, but uh, some of these municipalities also had staff members with them. Uh, I just think CML is a, is a place where a lot of it is about showing up um, and sharing our common interest as a community, which is something that Inglewood has been investing in significantly in the, in the past couple of years. This, to me, strikes me as a, a little bit of a missing piece. I was the only member of council who was able to attend the midweek CML conference, uh, this, this, in June, and I was the only member of our council there at, at this dinner. Um, the policy committee is getting ready to have its first meeting in October and I'm council's nominee to that, so I plan on attending those. I did not make any of the policy meeting sessions in the last meeting, but there's a lot of discussion on land use, home rule, property taxes. Big, big stuff that CML's been working on and I think Inglewood would benefit from a larger presence at the table.
Thanks for that, um, thanks for that item, uh, Member Ward. Uh, Member Wright, go ahead.
Okay, I have a couple things. Um, just wanted to remind everybody that on Thursday is, um, Member Prang's in mine, um, town hall. We've really expanded. We will have a, um, online capability. Um, we're offering pizza, we'll also have a gluten-free. We will have childcare, um, for anybody three and older potty trained. And if they're under three or not potty trained, we'll have coloring books, stickers, something, um, while they're with their parents. And it's in the community room starting at six thirty on Thursday. I did have a couple, um, council requests, please. I would like to know how much, um, revenue the Farm and Train, um, generated over the, um, this last summer. Um, and then the twenty twenty-three holiday season. And then, does the money generated go into a fund to support the parks? Or does it go into the general fund? And, um, also, does any city other than Inglewood receive discounts at Pirates Cove or any other city facilities? And if so, which cities, um, or, yeah, the Inglewood rates, I'm sorry. Um, and it, do they, if they receive Inglewood rates, and if so, what cities? And do Inglewood residents receive their city's rates at their amenities? Um, and that's all I have. Thank you. Hope that question wasn't too confusing.
No, I think I got it. So does any other city other than Inglewood receive discounted rates at, uh, the Farm and Train and just the holiday season in general at Bellevue Park? Or was that just?
No, I wanted the money generated at the Farm and Train.
Oh, wait, yeah, yeah.
And then Pirates Cove, I, I've heard rumors that Pirates Cove gives discounts from other cities
Okay.
to the resident rate. I wanna know if, if that's true, what cities.
Okay.
Um, and then if we receive resident rates at those other cities, if they have amenities, if that's true.
Got it.
They're a bit of a point of information.
Yes.
Member Russell, did you get your council request? Member Russell, did you get your council request response? Because the revenue for the Farm and Train appears to be on that council request.
Um, I haven't seen it, but I don't think I looked at this last week, so.
Cause that was just fairly recent, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was.
It's gonna be CRT oh eight two seven, came out just uh, in the Friday report this last Friday.
Perfect.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, but there's still an open question, though, on the second one.
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. I got it. If they return the favor. All right, anyone else? Go ahead, member Prang.
Thank you. Um, just to add to member Wright's reminder about our town hall on Thursday. Um, we did put out a survey associated with the town hall um, to help guide our conversation that day, so if you have not taken the survey, please do. We hope to see you there. Um, and then also, I will be sending this to Parks and Rec, but I ran into a resident this past weekend who um, was speaking to the popularity of our adult nights at Pirates Cove, and um, also speaking to the fact that it's incredibly difficult to get tickets that they sell out so quickly. Um, so she had a recommendation of perhaps adding an additional adult night and making it specific to Inglewood. And/or maybe like opening up ticket sales to our residents first, like an hour before it goes on sale to non-residents, just so that we can make sure that um, people from our city are able to attend those nights. Thank you.
Thank you, member Prang. Member Russell?
Um, I, I just have a couple of things, and this is um, maybe for the city attorney's office. A resident called me and they had um, uh, called in a report last money of, Monday of a skunk. Um, they, well, actually, I think they put it on Inglefix. Then they, they just put a message out that um, it would be taken care of as soon as possible. When I talked to them yesterday, so it would have been a week ago Monday, the skunk is still there, strewn all over, and um, it's really smelling pretty bad. It's, it's on Oxford uh, somewhere in the vicinity of the ditch. Um, but I think it was either on the sidewalk or on the street. And, and then one other thing I wanted to make council aware of, um, the letter that utility sent out um, on water service lines, um, Ms. Brown had uh, questions last week, and so I talked to the city attorney's office. There are, are three sections that I've just asked them to look at to see if we should readdress those somehow.
Thank you, member Russell. Real quick on the first, on the skunk, is it a dead skunk, or is it just a skunk in the area that?
It, no, it, it was a dead skunk, and it was just smattered all over everywhere. And I mean, the person that called it in and reported it had an autoimmune disease. I think they probably told him to pick it up and throw it in the trash. Um, but I, I don't know, has code enforcement in the past responded to dead animals to pick them up?
Deputy City Manager, do you have any incentive? I thought they did, but I'm not positive on that. Go ahead.
I can turn my best. As the, also as the animal control officer for the city, I do believe that they sometimes respond, but if it's a health issue, or sometimes if it's a state issue, they uh, call in other agencies to assist them with it. Uh, but member Russell, I will follow up on that Inglefix request, so thank you for letting me know about that.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Mayor Potem, go ahead.
This, thanks, thanks for coming back to me again. The skunk thing just, it just brought to mind something I, I wanted to get a council request on too. This is, this skunk situation is in my neighborhood, and it is one of, it is possibly one of the top complaints I get from, is we have a skunk infestation in our neighborhood. And everyb- everybody on my block and the blocks around has had their dogs sprayed by skunks. We found a dead one right next to our porch the other day. Um, it's just all over, and I wanted to see if there's anything the city can do to help with a, you know, area-wide, I, I, you know, uh, skunk infestation. Um, I, I don't know what the, what the, you know, what the appropriate path would be, but it is affecting a large portion of our neighborhood. I don't know where they're living, um, but it's a big problem, so that's a council request I'd like to add.
Thank you, member Anderson.
Can, can I make a suggestion? Only because I know my daughter had this problem in Texas. She knew where they were at. Apparently she threw a bunch of mothballs, and, and the skunks are gone. So mothballs may work.
I like that answer better than the other item that I was thinking that may solve the issue. I was like, I don't know if we wanna go that far, but I will, okay, so I got the council request on just possible options, so thank you for that. Uh, deputy city manager filling in for our city manager on the manager report, who is under the weather tonight, so thank you for filling in.
I had a few things, and most of them have already been touched on by you, so I'll try to be brief. Um, but yeah, the first is I just, as Mayor Potem Anderson said, I just wanted to thank all of those who came out to the event last week with Senator Hickenlooper. We had about thirty people there. Um, just thanks to many staff members, including Chris Hargrith, Krista Gravy, Peter Van Rye, and Sarah Stone, who worked to make sure this event was a success. There were a lot of neighbors there, as well as members of council. So thank you all for being there, as well as some other elected officials from the county and the state. Um, I also, I was actually looking at some data um, around uh, the train and other uh, programs tonight, because I just wanted to let you all know, as you're probably aware, that most of our summer programs have come to a close, so I just wanted to thank all of the full-time, part-time and seasonal staff that make those a success. The train will actually be open on weekends through September twenty-ninth. Um, there's been a purchase of over ninety thousand tokens, uh, which is a significant increase over the sixty-four thousand or so that were purchased last year. Um, the projected revenue so far is about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars this year. I think, I think it was about one eighty-five last year. Um, but member Russell, and um, that data probably is more correct than the council request. That's just what I had in front of me. Uh, Pirates Cove had over seventy-four thousand visitors, which is a slight increase over the seventy-six thousand or so that visited last year. It was open for a total of eighty-six days this year. Um, also really appreciate the information member Prang shared about adult nights, um, that someone I've talked to them about. It's been more popular than they even expected, so we appreciate the feedback about how to make those a success in the future. And then Broken Tea revenues are up, um, including fourteen percent for green fees. Golf cart rental fees are up twenty-four percent. In total rounds, as of August, are up eight percent for this year. Um, and then my last item is thank you to the council members who volunteered to be a part of the police chief screening process. Um, the interviews uh, for that, for the finalists will be next week, on Thursday and Friday. Those have been all set up, um, and that's all I had tonight.
Thank you very much, deputy city manager. All right, with that, everyone, we are now adjourned. See y'all next week.